Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 15, 2020 Fairfax Town Council meeting. I want to wish everyone a Happy New Year and thank you for coming out tonight. I'm going to start the meeting in a possibly unconventional way, and tonight I would like to convene the meeting. And I'd like to convene the meeting in honor and in memory of Matt Tasly. Matt served our town and reminded us of the power of art to heal and made whoever he interacted with just a little bit better and a whole lot more compassionate. Matt died in a tragic car accident last month. Matt was prolific. He was a prolific painter. He staged a gallery right here in front of us at the dais when he applied to be our artist in residence. And he gave us several years of pure creative genius. Our hearts go out to his family and all of his friends. And then, thank you all. And then, another thing that I'd like to try to do and introduce into our meetings at the beginning is a two-minute, less than two-minute tidbit on the public process and some of the things that your town council does up here. So we can start to bring more people in, create an inclusive participatory experience for everyone. I know a lot of people who come to all the meetings, but there are many people who don't and many people who might like to, should they understand how in the heck this all So, tonight I would like to direct your attention to the agenda, which you probably don't have in front of you right now, and look at the place where it lists Consent Calendar. The Consent Calendar is a tool that assists in making meetings more efficient. Consent allows bundling of agenda items together for one vote. Consent items are usually, usually items which have been previously discussed by the town council and have received public comment at one or several town council meetings. So you might ask, how does the public comment on consent items? If you would look, if you have in front of you the agenda, I'll read that the opportunity for public comment on consent calendar items will occur prior to the town council's vote on the consent calendar. The council may approve the entire consent calendar with one action. In the alternative, items on the consent calendar may be removed by any town council member or a member of staff to be considered in a separate discussion and a vote. So tonight, when we consider the consent calendar, there will be public comment after we take a look at consent before the council votes or before we decide to pull an item to be considered later in the meeting. So, that was your less than two-minute tidbit on the civic process. And with no further ado, I would like to start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Sorry. Councilmember Kohler.
Here.
Councilmember Hellman.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ackerman.
Here.
And Mayor Goddard.
I am here.
And followed by the approval of the agenda and affidavit of posting. Does anyone have any changes they'd like to make to the agenda, or can I have a motion?
Can I make a motion to approve the agenda and affidavit of posting?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so, motion Kohler and second Reed. Order of the agenda approved. Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Sorry. Thanks. The meeting protocol, I think I explained last time. We're a team. I really, I really hope and expect that we will all treat each other with respect and watch the time. So, three minutes for an individual to speak. You may have up to five minutes if you're speaking for a group. It's very, very awkward to interrupt someone. Whether we want to hear what they're saying or we really don't want to hear what they're saying, I will not interrupt you, but I will ask that you please watch the clock so that we can work together without any tension. At 10 o'clock, we'll review the agenda to see if anything can be continued to the next meeting, and there's an 11:30 rule which says that not started by 11:30 will be continued or adjourned to the next town council meeting. Announcements. Unless we override that. But we're working on that, right? And sometimes it is important. Yes. Okay, announcements. There are vacancies on our boards and commissions. Applications are available at Town Hall and on the Town website. For more information, contact Michelle Gardner or visit our website. We have up to three vacancies on the Climate Action Committee, one vacancy on the Open Space Committee. Two terms of the Planning Commission will expire on the 31st of this month and on the 29th of February, respectively. The Fairfax Food Pantry continues to serve us. I want to thank all the volunteers and I want to make sure everybody knows that that's available to everybody. And the hours of the Food Pantry are Saturdays between 8:30 and 10:30 at the Fairfax Community Church on the corner of Oak Manor and Sir Francis Drake. And I'm going to start reminding people every meeting to please go on our website, please go on the homepage and sign up for the Town Newsletter, and to receive emails of the agendas for both the Planning Commission meetings and the town council meetings. That's the way we're going to get everybody's contacts and it's the way you're all going to stay connected. And we are doing an excellent job, I say we staff with our input is doing an excellent job in keeping the website and getting that website accessible and attractive and informative for all of you. So please go ahead and sign up for that newsletter and follow the website. Open time for public expression. So to address the council on any matter that is not on tonight's agenda, and again, please take your three minutes and five if you are speaking for a group.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Good evening, council and mayor, and everybody assembled in the public. Yeah, my name's Tom O'Neill. I reside on Slominga, and I just want to say that I knew Matt personally as a friend for over 24 years. And like Renee said, he had a really kind heart. And I would like also to let everybody know that Matt unfortunately left a very young son to the son's mother. And, you know, I would just like to say that, you know, although, you know, it is a very, the circumstances were kind of negative, what happened, but I want everybody to know that Matt served not only as an artist in residence, but he also served on several mental health boards in Marin County. And was very active in spreading more information and compassion about mental health issues. So we need to always be aware of our mental health community and keep them, you know, in our hearts in a good place, you know? I mean, a lot of people struggle with mental health, and unfortunately, Matt was one of them. But, so I just wanted to, you know, come up here and speak to Matt's kind kindness and good heart, you know? And there is a lot more to the story than was being told, I'm sure. After that, I'd just like to say I work as a school crossing guard. I've been a school crossing guard for over 13 years now in Marin. Several, I've worked at quite a few different locations, but I just want to remind everybody that stop actually means stop and that it's important that people that are driving do not sit on top of crosswalks that are meant for children and people to cross the street safely, and that anytime anyone is in any area of a crosswalk, it is illegal to enter that crosswalk to go across it. So I just want to bring some, you know, insight into what goes on. You know, I could tell you as a school crossing guard, I've seen a lot of really goofy behavior from people. And I just want to remind everybody that, you know, crossing guards are doing their best to make it safe for children and others to cross the street, especially, I like to keep in mind about elderly people also. And I just went over my time, so I'm going to say thank you and leave, and good night to everybody and Happy New Year. Thanks, Renee. Thanks, everybody. Bye.
Deborah Benson, Cascade Drive. I'm sorry for your loss. I didn't know Matt, but he seemed to have evoked a lot of love from a lot of people. I have something kind of mundane to request. I would respectfully request that staff and council refrain from using their cellphones while we're here in meeting. I mean, certain members I have seen texting through the whole meeting. I've seen people looking down at their cellphones, not knowing if they're, I'm looking, not knowing if they're asleep or what, and then asking questions about topics that have already been answered, maybe because they weren't paying attention. I have a business, when I go to a client's office, I put my cellphone away because I'm on their time and their dollar, and I think you all are on our dollar and our time and doing our business, and I would like to see y'all put your cellphones away. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Jody Timms, 290 Cascade Drive, and I'm here to give you your brief update on the Commission on Aging Activities. Some of you may know that one of the initiatives that the commission has been looking at and working with this year is ageism, which is discrimination based on age, both external ageism and internalized ageism. And I just want to mention, I was at an event recently and a facilitator went to introduce a senior trainer and felt like she immediately had insulted this person by calling them a senior trainer. They were senior in that they had been, they were very experienced in the training she was talking about, but they were also older, an older person, and she made a big point of saying, "Oh, I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry that I called you a senior trainer." And that's such a perfect example of sort of an internalized ageism where we think it's an insult to be called an older adult. So, just something I want to bring to people's attention. If you have those kinds of feelings, it's basically, you're not caring very much about yourself and for yourself. So, just something to keep in mind. Oh, and also, I read a report recently, people who, on average, are more, have more positive views about aging live seven and a half years longer than those who feel very negatively about aging. So that's another good reason to work on it, if nothing else. Older adults who are exposed to positive views have much better memory and balance, and folks who have really negative views about aging have more feelings of worthlessness and actually worse memory. And I saw in the paper today, being rich, actually, buys you another nine years of living longer, so. Whether it's actual material wealth or more emotional wealth, you know, most of us want to live long and a healthy life. Anyway, the Commission on Aging, the next meeting is February 6th. It's on falling and how to fall safely, because people do fall, and there's a way to fall more gracefully if you can. So that's at Margaret Todd Center on February 6th in Novato. The Fairfax Forum this month was on clutter. We had 28 people, so a lot of people wanted to get, want to start the year off right by cleaning out things and letting things go. So that was really positive. But our next one is on wills and trusts. This was also really popular last year. So we have a local attorney, Lisa Fialco, come if you have any questions about wills or trusts. You have one, you wonder if you should have one. That's at the library on February 14th, the second Friday. Ross Valley Seniors on February 6th will also be having a luncheon, and the League of Women Voters will be doing a presentation there on the pros and cons of upcoming ballot measures. So if people are interested in that. Again, there's flyers in the back, and the library continues to do something every Friday from 1:00 to 2:00 for seniors. January 24th, there's an art project on memory wire bracelets. And then on the January 31st, there's a Celtic presentate, excuse me, concert with a violinist and a cellist. So those are upcoming. We had a great breakfast with friends this morning, and that continues monthly. And there are also, of course, all the free yoga classes and all the other free classes for seniors. We have a new flyer. All the flyers for age-friendly are on the back on the wall now, as well as the discount tips, excuse me, the discount, senior discounts and emergency tips. And I think that's it for now. Thanks.
Thank you, Jody. Next speaker, please.
Thank you, Mayor Frank Eager, 13 Midway, Fairfax. I'd like to commend your staff for getting cleared what is now a sidewalk. It was the old Northwest Pacific Railroad Station, debarking location, entering and debarking location between, on Center Boulevard, between Past Story heading towards San Antonio Town Limits. And a number of years ago, the town staff, I should say, the town Public Works Department removed the old trains loading platforms on the south side of Center going down, unbeknownst to the town council. And those are historical features of your town. The train, Center Boulevard was the train right-of-way, and your staff just got that right-of-way cleared so folks can walk on it now. It's a pedestrian walkway area, so I just want to say thank you, that's, you know, because it hasn't been cleared in years. And one other thing, I just happened to walk in when Deborah Benson was commenting on your iPhones and looking at them during the meeting. And I know there's groups in the state that have tried to get screens put above each of elected officials so their phones are connected, so the folks in the audience can see what they're seeing on their iPhones. And the reason is, someone may be testifying privately to you on an item that you're, that you're, that you have under, during a public hearing, and the public doesn't know that someone in the audience is commenting to you on an item. So that's a kind of a timely comment that Deborah made this evening. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, please.
Hello, folks. Stephen Keys, 310 Cypress Drive. I'm sorry that my data may be out of date, not up to date, but I would like to recommend that the town officially support Measure C for the Firewise JPA funding, and no on D. So that's my request. And if you can't do it officially, or you haven't done it officially, do it individually.
So Stephen, I think for clarification, we have, the council has endorsed or just, or just supported? We have endorsed Measure C?
Excellent.
As a council?
Excellent. That's good.
I don't think we have, Renee. I endorsed it privately. We haven't brought it to this council, so.
I know you said put it on the ballot. We'd have to check the resolution.
Oh, okay, so I've misspoken. Thank you for your comment.
But, but I think the intent was you did support it, otherwise why would you say put it on the ballot?
So can we, can we bring it in February to support it formally?
Sure, you could do it, even if your resolution previously said you supported it, you could do it again, too. Sure.
Okay, please bring that. That would be great. Thanks, Stephen.
All right. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Richard Applebaum, 621 Woodland Road. I'm also, just had a couple of comments about fire. You know, now that we're in our winter kind of wet season, you know, that sort of sometimes drifts back a little bit because we're not in that sort of mindset that we're in all fall and sort of unnerved. And I wanted to just say, you know, having this been an important issue for me the last couple of years, and I'm really pleased with the sort of activation that's happened in Fairfax and how the council and staff has been involved. I'm really excited about all the Firewise stuff. We don't have it, we were going to have a meeting on my area, that didn't happen yet, but maybe it will. But I just wanted to say that I know that we don't have all the resources here locally or in the county or in the state, or, you know, there's so much more that could be done. But I would just want to encourage all of the council to be as connected and active with whatever the things are that are appropriate for you all to be touching. And so I don't know how many of you are like on whatever the groups are or the official representatives of the town, but I think it's important that all of you are sort of getting that information close up. So if, I don't know if there's one person or three of you that go, but, or if more can go, or you can rotate or whatever, but I just think it's really important that all of you are staying close to that and on the front lines of that information. Thanks.
Thank you, Richard. And just to know that we do have an agenda item tonight to talk about our committee assignments, and on the back of that agenda item, it actually lists which of us are on which committee at this time. Next speaker, please.
Mark Bell Domingo, Fairfax. First, I'd like to thank the town for reimbursing what the cost would have been to me regarding Peter Lax's going-away party. The second thing is, I think that the perception that's been at one time real but no longer real is that Fairfax is broke, really have to play things really, you know, tight, money's really tight. I don't think that's true. For example, if we look at the bridge that's proposed on Meadow Way, legally, that bridge can be replaced for a fraction of what's proposed, which would save the town $460,000. Now, I look at $460,000, you could probably repave creek between Belinas and Dominga where the road's totally chewed up. You could probably redo all of the sidewalks in town, maybe two or three times over if you don't like them. $65,000 to $75,000 for a bus shelter? I told someone who was complaining about the tent, I said, "Well, a new one's coming for $65,000." And he went, "65,000? You can do a bus shelter for $10,000. What's that about?" So when you say, you know, constantly we hear, "Oh, the town's really broke, the town doesn't have money to clear escape routes," that Mallory has brought up several times, "the town doesn't have money to help some guy who's like ripped out four transmissions on his car, even when he's asked the town for help and he's still paying taxes." How can that be true when you can just urinate away $460,000 that you don't need to? The other point that I'd like to raise in my minute and one second is, I'd like a real accounting of what happened with the whole thing with the Cascade striping project. Because two days after the meeting here, where we were assured that the town of Fairfax had spent no money, the Marin IJ had an article that totally contradicted that. It said that safe routes for schools paid the initial 19, or paid the $19,000 to the consultants, but that the town actually paid for the striping.
So Mark, I hate to interrupt, but, and you can have your time back, but that is agendized tonight, so there will be a report.
Well, that's talking about the, that's talking about the actual project. Are you going to go into like the finances, like of how several years ago, $10,000 went to Parisi?
If you have questions about that during that item, they will be addressed.
Great. I'll be here.
Thank you. Okay. Hi, Michael.
Happy New Year. I'm sure it's all surprising for you guys, like, what's going to come out of our mouths? Well, sitting back, I want to point something out so we all thought about something. So a gentleman came up here and talked about his interest on Measure C and Measure D. So I'll go backwards. Measure D by referendum, it doesn't preclude anything. It doesn't say we can't restore our creeks. It doesn't say we can't have a fire department there. What it speaks to is the public process. It's the most democratic process you can. In fact, it's how my property is zoned. So what it means is that the people get to decide what happens. It precludes the supervisors, which they did, saying, "We'll take grants," in the background, "for a predisposed disposition of property," and then falsely have meetings to the public, which I was a part of, saying, "Oh, we're going to look at all these different options," when in fact, those grants precluded those things. They were false. This is why the stewards' original movement won at court. So I certainly hope people will look at Measure D and read the measure. Measure D speaks very clearly that before there's change by our elected bodies, it doesn't mean it has to be golf, but before it changes that purpose that the people get to vote on it. That's a very reasonable thing. As for Measure C, as a volunteer fireman, I can't think of a greater group of people that you'd like to have as your neighbor, period. But the growing finances and pension liabilities on how we allocate these funds was really illustrated for you when Jason made his presentation for White Hill School. White Hill School, they used the goats, they pulled broom, they mechanically weed-eated and cut lower-hanging branches on 21 acres. I do that for 24 acres. For their process and going through the public process and prevailing wage, it costs the taxpayers $69,000. By doing it privately, it costs me about $10,000 each year. So although there's good reason that we want to collaboratively work together, we're also exposing ourselves to additional taxes for the residential units, a $75 increase. I believe we're currently at $1.10 per square foot for each and everybody's home, as well as additional taxes for open space. So even for myself, I assume that'll be an additional $10,000 a year in taxes. And so this is with the burden for people at rent and our fixed income that those taxes keep going up. So we're really pushing out the people we want to include and the people that we give lip service to. So I hope that we can all put those thoughts before we do our voting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Michael. So moving on, at this point, we will consider the Consent Calendar. I'd like to ask if any of my colleagues have anything that they would like to make a brief comment on or to take off of consent for consideration? Anyone? Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Hellman had a correction to the minutes that I could read into the record.
Yes, please.
Okay. It is for the December 4th minutes, on the consent calendar at that time, item number 18, and this is on page 7 if you want to look at it. Her comment should be corrected to say that, and Councilmember Hellman, weigh in whenever you need to, that she stated that the project, which is the Miranda Heights Project, would not proceed without an EIR. That's correct. Yes. Okay. So that's just when you make your motion, if you all agree with that statement, you would make it with this amendment. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. And any, anyone else? Before we go to the public, I was going to ask if Garrett would make a brief comment on number three on consent.
Okay. I just want to point out, you have that supplement for item four, too, on the dais in front of you. So when you make your motion, it includes that supplement.
Okay.
It's basically a supplement to the council member reports.
Okay. And just for the, for the public, I want, I ask that number three on consent be added and continue to be added to provide these, these brief updates. And so I just want, without pulling the item, I'd like Garrett to reiterate what it is that's been put in this staff report for tonight.
Sure. You may recall back in December, we had reported that. Is it working? How about now? Huh. Okay. How about now? Okay. So back in December, staff had reported that the applicant indicated. So back in December, staff had reported that the applicant indicated that they may want to revise the project description for the EIR. And so we report.
Sorry. Some people have no idea what you're talking about.
Okay.
So can you just read the title of the, of the item as well?
Oh, the item?
I didn't.
Oh, sorry.
Preface it.
So item four is, "Receive update that the Miranda Heights project application is on hold pending the council approval of an EIR professional services agreement, which has yet to be scheduled for consideration." So as background, what that really means is, in December, we reported that we really did not bring to you an agreement for EIR professional services because the applicant, which is the developer of the Miranda Heights project, which in the past, we refer to as the wall property, indicated that he'd like to consider revisions to the description, project description for the EIR. All EIRs have a project description, and he was thinking he'd like to change it. So the update is, "To date, we have not received a revised project description. We believe that we may receive one shortly. And when we do, then we will return back to the council with the agreement for environmental services, assuming we're at that point ready to move forward." I cannot, we really can't tell you whether that'd be February or March because we haven't received anything. So that's the update. So really, it's an update to tell you that there's really no activity. And the main point that we always want to make is, the application processing is on hold pending actual agreement to begin the EIR. So we're not doing anything until we actually get to that point.
Okay. Thank you. And Barbara?
Yeah, just a question, Garrett. Since we pass time limits on applications and such, is there a time limit where this application would expire? Maybe this question is for Ben.
Maybe the best way to answer it is, there is one, we haven't really gone through that yet to figure out what that would be. Although if they do come back, revise project description for the EIR, and we do take something to the council, that would be within the timeframe. But the one thing I forgot to mention is, we do encourage people to go to the town website and sign up to receive updates on the Miranda Heights project. You automatically receive updates. We do post all the current updates on the project on the town website.
So when we do the update for the next council meeting, maybe we can talk about what that timeframe is for the application to expire, since we're not prepared to do it tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Great. So I'm going to go out to the public on consent. So anyone who has any comment on consent, please make those comments now.
Thank you, Mayor Frank Agar, 13 minutes away. On item number three, that your manager just explained, Fairfax made a finding that the application was complete, and that triggered the environmental impact report process of the California Environmental Quality Act. If in fact, the applicant is going to change the project, revise something, then it's going to have to go back to staff for determination as to whether or not that application is still complete. You're going to have to have a modified project application. You just can't change horses in middle stream and say, "I've changed the project now, and we're going to do an EIR on this new project." Once that determination is made by Fairfax on the California Environmental Quality Act, Fairfax has to act on, on an EIR. For number three, that's okay. For item number five, you've got a second reading on for the ADU ordinance, and that's the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. There are 300 to 400 accessory dwelling units in Fairfax, some of them legal, some are Without identifying the second units in Fairfax and asking for more accessory dwelling units to be approved or applied for or approved in Fairfax, it's going to be very difficult for you to determine just how many we have in town. The other problem is, the way the ordinance is written, it's a boon to Airbnb, HomeAway, VRBO, TripAdvisor, and Cool stays. Because you're giving them a break right now. Those are short-term rentals that are covered under your current town codes that requires a transit occupancy tax. Your, your, your staff, your financial staff could tell you what percent they should be paying right now under your ordinance. Any rental that's less than 30 days needs to be paying a transit occupancy tax in the town of Fairfax. I don't know how many tens of thousands of dollars we're losing because no one's paying that tax. But you don't have to do any new ordinances at all. It's covered under your current ordinance. So I'm just asking you to please start collecting the transit occupancy tax to the town of Fairfax. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Frank. And Garrett, just piggybacking on Barbara's request to bring something back in terms of the, the, the application deadlines and expirations, could you bring us a short report on some of the issues raised by Mr. Agar in terms of applications and when they trigger a, a new review? And we don't have to do that now because I know it's, it's more complicated and this isn't meant to be that, but on, in, on the February agenda, it would be, it would be good to have an update. Okay. So can I have a motion on consent with all of the, all of the changes?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar with the change in the minutes as expressed by Councilmember Hellman, and also with the supplement to item four.
And is there a second?
I would second that.
Okay. So motion Kohler and second read, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And none opposed? Okay. Motion carries. All right. Moving on, the next section of the agenda is the public hearings. And so we will begin with the first item. And Garrett, are you making the staff report on this?
Some brief comments.
Great.
So the item, I don't know if you were going to read the subject line, if you let me to.
Oh, yes, I can do that. So number six on the agenda, the public hearing, is to adopt a resolution establishing maximum rates collected by Marin Sanitary Service for solid waste services to be effective January 1st, 2020, and approving a second amendment to the contract between the town of Fairfax and Marin Sanitary Service. So Garrett, thanks.
Okay, great. Before I turn it over to Garth with R3 Consulting, just a couple of items. One is, this item was actually continued from your council meeting of December 4th, 2019. And obviously, you should probably note that then Vice Mayor Goddard is now mayor, and then Councilmember Lax obviously is no longer on the council. But those two council members composed of that subcommittee that staff and R3 worked with regarding the MSS rate application, as well as the extension, terms for extending the agreement with MSS. You may recall, back in April of 2019, was when we recommended to the, the council, and then it was Vice Mayor Goddard and Councilmember Lax, and it was regarding the last rate increase for 2019 by MSS. At that time, the subcommittee indicated it would report back to the council regarding the proposed new methodology to calculate rates. And so we went back and looked at that and really given two things. One is the MSS rating requests for 2020, combined with the new methodology, subcommittee and staff agree that it made complete sense, maybe take a more broad, comprehensive look at the agreement. And the main thing being, the contract expires in December 2021, and it made sense maybe to wrap that all together with a new contract extension. And so in general, we've been working with R3 Consulting Group on discussions with MSS, as well as review of the rate application. R3 is the same firm that we use for the 2019 rate review, and R3 is also the firm that the Marin Franchisers Group does in similar things in terms of their rate review and contract extensions. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Garth. Oh, there's Garth. Garth, R3, to make the presentation. And I'm pretty sure perhaps reps from MSS would like to comment after Garth's presentation, as well as the mayor, as a member of the subcommittee, may actually want to offer some comments to the council.
And thanks for coming, Garth. Just wanted to ask, because I've always been curious, which of the three Rs are part of your R3?
That's, that's great. For, for us, actually, the three Rs are resources, respect, and responsibility.
Oh, my goodness.
So not the, the typical reuse, reduce, reuse, recycle, rot. So for us, it's, it's really our motto relating to, we exclusively work for local government agencies, primarily here in California, on solid waste and recycling and rate matters. We don't work for MSS. We work well alongside them, but we don't work for the private garbage companies. We have community interests and rate payer interests at heart, and that's what we, that's what our work is about. Thank you for the time, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, staff, and members of the public, as well as Marin Sanitary Service. Again, I'm Garth Schultz. I'm a principal owner with R3, here to report out on both the Second Amendment to the franchise agreement, which is before you for consideration this evening, and on the rates and rate methodology. So just as context and background, you've heard this likely from, from me before. MSS is your solid waste service provider. They provide the suite of services shown here on the slide. And the compensation that MSS receives is through the rates. So all of the services that they provide, all of that compensation comes through the monthly rates paid by residential customers and commercial customers here in the town as set maximum every year by the council. So there's no taxpayer funding or other funding going directly to MSS. It's all through the rates that, that you set as maximum and that they're able to charge and extend to the rate payers. Garrett covered this well. Your current contract with MSS expires at the end of November 2021, which puts you a little bit ahead of the game, but not so much so. It's important to plan for continuance of solid waste services, whether with MSS or with another provider, given the town's history with MSS and satisfaction of, with the services, was the judgment of the subcommittee and staff that pursuing a negotiated extension was the first best line of defense in planning for future services. So the town and MSS, along with R3's support, negotiated in good faith for an extension to this term. And as Garrett mentioned, the Zero Waste Subcommittee took part in those extensions or those discussions. You know, in essence, the Second Amendment before you extends the contract by what is essentially a standard capital amortization period for the large vehicles, trucks, that are used in solid waste operations by 10 years. There really is kind of the minimum ability to be able to finance and spread across the capital investment of vehicles. The primary driver for doing this this year, or really, you know, for this 2020 year, was with respect to the new rate methodology, and I'll go into some detail about that. And then we do have some clarification of town services, other terms and conditions that we were able to negotiate and achieve as a part of this process. Now, with respect to the new rate methodology, I briefed the town on this back in April of 2019, at which time the town considered and then adopted a 19% rate adjustment. And that rate adjustment was following what was a prescriptive process in the franchise agreement, essentially a base year rate review that looks at all of the expenses and all of the revenues that are allocated to the town services by MSS. And under the existing methodology, that's something that occurs every three years, whether you want it or not, like it or not, it's a part of the process and part of the terms and conditions of the existing agreement. So that was one of the reasons why, and I'll show you a slide in a little while, your rate adjustments have been a little bit schizophrenic over the course of time, up and down and all over the place. And part of the intention of the new rate methodology was to even that out, spread it out over time, have it be more predictable, more stable. And it's important to note that that methodology was actually developed as a part of the Marin Franchisers Group. We had a contract with them starting back in 2017 to do exactly what we did with this methodology, which was to make it more transparent, make it more predictable, smooth out the bumps and the increases, and make it more explainable. That methodology has been adopted by the Marin Franchisers Group entities comprised of the county, San Rafael, Los Gaias Sanitary District, Larkspur and Ross, and then San and Salmo recently adopted it as well back in December. So all of the other MSS-served agencies have now adopted that methodology. And I covered that slide here. So what, so the, the existing methodology is what yielded that fairly large rate adjustment last year, and has kind of yielded a, a pattern of high and low rate adjustments over the course of time. What we sought to do via development of the new methodology was to make it streamlined, less costly. That's an important piece here. Under your existing methodology, where you've got that every three years, you do an in-depth look. Your interim years are a little bit of a higher level, or kind of higher level indexed based look, but it still took a fair amount of time for MSS, for consultants like us, for, for town staff to be able to review those every year. Those costs were carried within the rate adjustments, and as a result of the new methodology, if adopted, that process, the time and money spent will be reduced. This would be, you, you wouldn't have gone through this as a town yet, but we did complete our first year under the new methodology for the Marin Franchisers Group agencies that I mentioned, with a success story. It was easier, it was cheaper, and it resulted in rate adjustments below 5%, which is essentially standard for the industry because of the high capital intensivity and reliance on fuel and high capital equipment costs. So it's been a good success story for the other agencies. So under this new methodology, the default is going to be an index rate adjustment year where the majority of the costs, which are those for MSS, to collect all of the materials from residents and businesses, that's tied to an external market index. It's a CPI index posted by the Bureau of Labor Statistics. Anybody can look it up. The code for it's in the franchise agreement amendment that's put before you. And it's, it's for water, sewer, trash. It basically ties you to other utilities across the country. There isn't a more regional one for California. We wish there was, but it's a fairly stable and predictable indicator of where costs and expenses are going to go. Now, there, there still is a provision in this new methodology that would allow for a more detailed, cost-based look, but it's spread out every five years. And if neither the town or the, the group of Marin Sanitary Service-served agencies or MSS call for it, if all parties are happy with the way things have gone, you don't have to go through that costly and intensive effort. So it becomes more optional at that point. Now, this is a bit of an example of kind of the difference between the methodologies. MSS calculated what the town's indexed rate adjustment would be for 2020 under the existing methodology and under the new methodology. And you can see, it's a, you know, it's a difference of 1.4% or so. But under the existing methodology, you would, if, if that, if the recommendation to move forward with the new methodology isn't approved, you'd be facing something like a 6%. As it is under the new methodology, it's under 5%. And it's just due to the differences in calculations and this reliance primarily on this external index rather than actual expenses incurred. So in essence, this is a change from regulating their rates based on actual expenses to really regulating revenues that they can receive from rate payers based on external indexes. This is that somewhat schizophrenic pattern I was mentioning. So over the course of the last 15 years or so, you've had rate adjustments, you know, over 25%. You've had one year in which your rates went down. You've had a few where there was no rate adjustment whatsoever. The overall average is right around 5%. And I've done dozens of these across the state. 4% to 5% is pretty much the standard. Everybody wants it to be a 2% to 3% CPI, but really, for solid waste industry, the high level of capital intensivity and fixed costs of those rolling capital assets really does mean you tend to land between a 4% to 5% average per year. And so really, the objective here is to make that more stable and predictable and avoid some of these patterns. Now, kind of moving back from rates and the new rate methodology, which was one of the kind of drivers of looking at the extension at this point in time, there were a number of other aspects to the contract that we were able to negotiate with Marin Sanitary Service. Some of these are to, to bring the agreement into alignment with the other agreements that are held by Marin Sanitary with the other agencies here in Marin County. And that's what most of these are here on this slide. One is the ability to be able to, as a jointly group, you know, group of agencies receiving service from Marin San, call for a performance review of metrics, get reportable metrics on their performance over time, and then actually be able to go in and audit that. Not that there's anything we think is there right now, but we can picture five years from now wanting to be able to say, "We want to know what's happening now. We want to be able to look at customer service, or operations, or diversion rates." And so this provides for that opportunity to do so on a regular basis, in concert with the other agencies, and also to fund the cost of that. A second point is on assignment. And so assignment has to do with if Marin Sanitary Service were to ever seek to sell their company. If they were to do so, in the existing agreement, they have to come to each of their clients and agencies and say, "Hey, we're looking for your blessing and approval to assign this to a new third party." And under the existing language in the agreement, that's essentially a "shall not unreasonably withhold" term, meaning you can't unreasonably withhold your, your approval or consent to that assignment. This is something that Marin Sanitary offered up in order to demonstrate that, one, and Patty Garberino with the company may get up and reflect some of this, they don't intend to sell, that's their representation, but the assignment language gives you more opportunity to be able to approve an assignee that's going to be appropriate for the town, not just whoever's qualified and has the financial resources, but who's actually going to be able to provide services in the way that the town expects services. So that's an important leverage point for the town in the future. So that's an important leverage point for the town in the future. There are a number of new state regulations, I won't go into them in detail, but they're reflected in the adjustments to this agreement, essentially recognizing that the town has to work in partnership, sorry, MSS has to work in partnership with the town to achieve new state unfunded mandates. A few of the other contractual terms, one of the ones, terms that was important for MSS to make adjustments to, and they're doing this service area-wide, is a change to the green waste, additional green waste set-out procedures. Currently, town residents can put out in their own, personally owned containers extra green waste at the curb, it's a very manual process, it's time-intensive and actually results in greater injuries for their drivers to which the company can speak, that's going to be transitioned to a cart-based program where they will provide the carts and containers, and that they, you know, it's essentially the automated carts that can be lifted by the truck's arm, reducing the wear and tear on people's bodies. It's an equivalent level of service, and folks are still in a position to be able to, at a very nominal fee, I think it's less than $3 a month, sign up for four additional large green waste carts if they so choose. So this is something that they're doing on a service area-wide basis. And some of the details, the outreach, information to customers, card hangers, there's going to be a lot of outreach coming from the company, they can speak to the specifics of that if you have questions, and it's also reflected in the agreement. And then any of the customer-owned containers that folks seek to recycle can be set out and made arrangements for recycling.
Can you stay on that? Can you go back to that page? I just want to make sure.
Sure.
Did you cover everything on that page?
I believe I did. It's just the first part is essentially saying that there's the transition from the existing means of being able to set up additional green waste container or green waste material to this new Marin Sanitary provided containers, the tipper carts. Their, folks are now able to start getting that, they can start selecting or requesting up to two green waste carts, right now it's just one, they can select up to two within the base rates that are charged, and then they can select, request up to four additional carts at that nominal additional rate.
So both of those are fee-based services that you're adding, is that correct?
Well, the first one is inclusive, so instead of the one existing green waste container, you can now get two within the existing base rates. The second one is an additional fee for service at a nominal fee for the additional containers.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Final high-level summary of additional elements, MSS can start paying zero-waste event fee to the town to be able to generate revenues, to be able to implement good zero-waste practices at events, and then there has been a request by the company to kind of transition the portable toilet management from the company, that's a mouthful, isn't it, from the company to the town over the course of the next couple of years. They can speak to the specific reasons of that, but there is a logistics and coordination issue that they're kind of in the middle of on that one. And then the town, or MSS will be working with the town on the town's own solid waste recycling and green waste diversion services, both with the public containers and for this town's facilities, just to ensure greater levels of recycling and composting from those. One of the things I should note is that there is also, within the new methodology, a greater ability to be able to move towards shared containers and shared service, that's something where under the existing methodology, if folks were to seek to share service or share accounts, that represented a reduction in revenue to the company without a reduction in cost, because they still have to pick up the same amount of material. Under the new methodology, folks seeking to do that, while there would be a near-term hit to the company, it's something that's resolved over time by the way the methodology works, essentially accounting for the fact that there would be that change in the subscription quantities. So that's just something else that's not shown. The actions recommended before you, neither approve the contract amendment and the 2020 rate adjustment, here's what the rate adjustments over time look like, and that 2020 rate adjustment for most residential subscribers, those subscribe to the 32-gallon garbage bin, just as an aside, the 32-gallon garbage bin is the, the garbage container is the unit on which the rates are based, but it's inclusive of all of the services, recycling, organics, all of the others shown on that first slide I showed you. The cost center is not all in garbage, it's just that the revenue center is based on the garbage container size. So it represents about $2 a month. And then finally, here's where rates in Marin County lie. As of a couple of days ago, there's actually one bar that got adjusted yesterday that I didn't get a chance to update in this slide. Town's rates are the ones in yellow, right next to the red, on the far right, all of those in green are the remaining Marin Sanitary Service rates, those in blue are Mill Valley Refuge Service, servicing many of the towns and cities in Marin County. And then in the middle, I just want to call out a couple outliers in red, City of Nevada and West Marin. West Marin, Marin County Board of Supervisors adopted a 30% rate increase to those rates yesterday, so those are now up closer to that line, that average line across the middle of the bar. You and the town with the rate adjustment recommended will be below the average for the county, and that just leaves the City of Nevada as an outlier. That outlier is known to be rates that are not covering the cost of service. Recology, which currently provides service to City of Nevada through Nevada Sanitary District, will be coming forward in this current year with an application under, allowed under their agreement to increase those rates to actually meet cost of service, and we expect that that bar will jump to somewhere around the average overall. And with that, I'm very happy to take any questions you might have.
Okay, questions from Council, Barbara?
So I'm not sure if this is for you, Garth, or if it's for Garrett. So the $10,000 zero-waste fee, have we calculated what the cost is, would be to the town? Are we going to come out whole? For example, I paid for portable toilets. Toilets themselves are not expensive, it's the waste management part that can be very expensive, so have we calculated, is that sort of a even?
The way I see it, and Garrett, correct me, it's a net gain to the town. There were a certain number of events provided under the existing agreement that the town wasn't fully taking advantage of, so it was basically value that was sitting there that you didn't get to accrue. So there, rather than say, let's find other events that we can throw into this, it's taking the value of those additional events and turning them into a payment to the town so that you have now that ability to be able to do your own zero-waste management for the existing events you do have and for which you receive service from MSS for already. Garrett, any correction to that?
I think the best way to sum it up is, I believe it costs MSS $5,000 to $7,000 for the portable toilets, to bring them and then them to take them, and the company to pick them up and move them out. And so the, I think that's the number, but MSS could correct that, and there's added number there that allows us to use, to, for example, the three, $2,500 to $3,000 built into that number, if we wanted to use it to compensate, I believe the Fairfax Festival uses CCNB to do the recycling stations, and so that's the added value. We would actually have money to be able to cover that service that I believe the Fairfax Festival perhaps doesn't have the funding to cover that service.
Okay, and so, for example, Streets for People, which is an additional event, we would cover all of that, because...
So Barbara?
If I might respond to that, so the only events that Marin Sanitary has been servicing are, is the festival. So Streets for People, that's done on a volunteer basis with sustainable Fairfax.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
And they've had some outreach staff come to some of these events, which I think we're still going to be able to have happen, because that's in everybody's best interest.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have two questions. So I'm new, and this is, this topic and this realm is new to me, so if you give me a little bit of latitude, I would appreciate it. So, one thing I'm struggling with is the rate increase that we incurred in April of last year, and on the heels of that, now we're looking at another increase, which is not insignificant. And so, did you work on that nearly 20% increase last year?
Yes, we did.
And so, at that point in time, like, help me understand, was the MSS model in place then, or like, what, how is it that, I mean, you must, we, and I'm not pointing the finger at you, because I don't know, you're the middleman, and I understand that, but help me understand, we must have known with our run rate and our usage rate, and what was happening with Marin sanitation, what was coming down the pipe, we must have known this was coming, right?
Not exactly, I mean, yes and no. The way the existing methodology, under your current agreement, pre-amendment before you tonight, worked, is that every three years, you essentially had what was kind of a true-up period. So in the interim years, your rates were adjusted on kind of a more limited basis that didn't look fully at every expense and every revenue, it was, it was a lighter touch. And so there, it's as if you were to do, I'm trying to think of a good corollary, I'm just so much into rates, it's hard to think outside of the box on that. So you could see it was coming because you knew that a base year review was due, and every time you have a base year review, you start to see one of those spikes. So we knew that there would be some sort of an impact like that. What the exact magnitude was, wasn't known or even possible to know until Marin San put their financial application in front of the town. So that's really the key difference. So you don't get a constant run rate from MSS. What you do get from them on a regular basis or annual reports of what's going on...
Yeah, I saw the 2018 annual report, there's lots of data in there, so do you not get monthly data from them?
I don't. The town gets the annual report, but you also don't get this kind of in-depth financial look on that regular of a basis, partially because to do so at that level of interval would be so prohibitively expensive for them to be able to run those numbers that constantly. So you, in the interim years, you just don't have that deep of a dive. That could be done, but what you do with that is you're one, kind of bringing up the level of administration that they have to apply, the level of administration for the town to be able to review that coming in, and you're essentially forcing rates to be recalculated based on actual expenses every single year. So part of the merits of the new methodology is, you're not really looking at that so much anymore, you're saying, here's what we're willing to pay you, you've got to find a way to live within what we're able to pay, based on the terms of those agreements. The difference in that 2019 year in April, which really was meant to be a January 1, was that that's when you had that opportunity to go in, and when they had the opportunity to come forward and say, here's what's happening with our expenses, here's what's happening with our revenues, they open up their books, and then the calculation is essentially stipulated in the agreement, how shall we look at the reasonable and allowable and justifiable costs of the company?
Maybe, Garth, if you go back to your slide on the rate increases over the 15-year period, because, because I think when you look at that, you could tell the average was about 5%, but some of those spikes in 2011 was related to the new contract, and that was a huge increase to get to a revised baseline, and then what we found is, we went through this model, there were some years where energy, not energy, fuel prices just dropped dramatically, and then we had a negative, and then the next year also the fuel prices went back up, but that's not a true-up year, and so you wait two years, and all of a sudden it's, hey, we got to make up for that increase, because gas went up like 25%. And so it's those fluctuations that oddly, over time, it averages to the 4% to 5%. These fluctuations make it, so it's really hard to talk about it, because when we had the negative or zeros, no one ever says anything, obviously.
I'm going to ask a question, and I'm not being facetious, do they have a finance team?
Yes. I think one of them arrived.
Okay. Okay. The next question I have is with regard to the goal in Marin, 2025, right, zero waste. I was a little puzzled why the contract, from a strategic standpoint, wasn't framed up, like, shouldn't we be incentivizing our residents and our townships to be working towards that goal? And I was rather shocked that we don't have any incentives in there from a rate perspective and a usage perspective and a composting perspective and all that, right? Like, I was, there was a little blurb in there about throwing us $10,000, so...
I can respond to that. There's a real challenge that this entire industry is facing right now with the ability to be able to recycle more and get more out of landfills. And there's a couple misconceptions as well. One is that to compost and recycle properly is more expensive than putting it in the landfill, just bottom line, and that's getting worse every year. So though there's potentially ways of finding financial incentives to that, the bottom line is that from a rate payer's perspective, those incentives have essentially run their course in California. We've had these incentive-based models for 30 years, which we're starting to see on a statewide basis, bitten us in the foot, because we've kind of created these financial incentives, put less and less in your garbage container, and put more in your recycling container, but it's reached its kind of logical ends, where now folks are putting the wrong stuff in the recycling container because they're trying to save money on their garbage container, and so there's this wishful recycling that occurs, and I know the company can speak more to this. Industry-wide, in response to the change in the recycling markets due to the Chinese National Sword and others, and to the change in state unfunded mandates, which continue to mount over year over year, both with respect to recycling, but also now to organics and getting organics out of the landfill, the industry's reeling. There are no good new models that can actually drive the company to change behaviors that well. Ultimately, what it comes down to is, as consumers, residents, businesses, and I'm within this as well, and I've been working in this field for 20 years, we don't respond very well to the dollar signs in front of us saying, hey, if you reduce how much you consume, whether it's garbage or recyclables or compost, we can really save money. The real bottom line is, and some of the metrics that we don't have up here, is we all, year over year, over the course of the last 20 or 30 years, consume more. We are sending just about the same amount to landfill that we used to, but overall, the amount of overall waste we generate has increased. We get more in cardboard, we have a lot more plastics, though there used to be, you know, viable recyclable end markets for those, those have really dried up and limited, and the revenue side of that equation has also left the table. So the reality here is that there is an opportunity to continue to do more in diversion, there is a county-wide goal. MSS, from my understanding of the town's representation, has been a good partner. From a third-party perspective, looking at their, the business practices, the programs they offer, their partnership with their municipal clients, they're one of the best actors that are out there. There isn't a silver bullet solution to getting better recycling, other than, and this is one of the things the town needs to be prepared for with respect to SB 1383, that one of the new state unfunded mandates, and I know you have aspects of this in your municipal code now, but it's really taking a more command and control approach with waste generators, meaning all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know it's a tough, it's a tough one.
Thanks, Stephanie. Any other questions from Council?
Yeah, just one is, and I don't, not being a party to the negotiation of the contract back and forth, but I know that a lot of people put out additional green waste cans to supplement the tipper ones, and I get why you want to move to all those, but those additional charges, you know, what, what drove the decision to make the, you know, there be two of those with no charge, but you add a third one and you get an extra two and a half bucks to rent that extra cart?
Really based on the equivalent volumes, so the terms of the amount that you can set out now allowable under the agreement is at a certain volume, the two containers is essentially that equivalent volume overall. So they're larger containers, there's fewer of them, but you have more capacity within each of those containers.
Yeah, but I know in a practical sense, there's the one big green container out there, and there might be three or five other containers next to it, and that's just how much there is. But right now, with the two, you know, if you go from one big green one to two big green ones, that's the same as one big green one plus two regular cans.
Right? Yeah. So... I'll let the company respond to that in a little more detail. One of the things I do know was their objectives, and this was in the firm negotiating point on their side, one of their only asks, was alignment with the rest of the service area to have consistent messages throughout the population.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and it could be that, yeah, my yard is bigger than the other yards and it generates more green waste, I don't know. So maybe that's just how that shakes out. Is that the average around the town? I'm seeing you nod your head, yes. So that's what drove it, is the average number, okay.
So as we're talking about the services and the amendment to the contract, it would be great if we could get the Marin Sanitary folks to come up and talk with us about that, but in terms of Garth's presentation, do we have any other... Okay. Garth, that was awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and in terms of public comment and question time, let's hear from Marin Sanitary, and then we will take public comment, question, and make sure that we all get our concerns addressed. Hi, Patty. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us, and I'd also like to thank staff for all of the hard work. This is a two-for-night with respect to a new rate methodology and the contract extension, so thank you for your consideration. And just to address the new rate methodology, I'd also like to extend a thanks to R3 and to Garth, because on our end, it's far more easily described to the public. more easily described to the public and certainly less labor-intensive. Imagine your brain on that chart. That's what it was like to put those rate models together in the past. And we certainly honor and live with transparency financially and are happy to answer any questions. But let me just briefly introduce to you the colleagues I have here with me today and what they can specifically address if you have questions, further questions. Kim Shively is our contract compliance officer. And she is here also and can mention the green waste can audit. And you're right, John, it was based on an average. And generally, most of what we try to do is fit into what is the average service required and that satisfies most. Ray Holmes is our new CFO. So in terms of the, the financial team that we have here, not only do we have Ray, but we also have also our other senior CFO. And I just say that not because of his age, because we're the same age. But, but with due, due respect to the presentation that was made earlier about seniorism. Ray has decided after several years that it's, it's perhaps a good time to spend more time with his grandkids. So he will be doing that, but still with us at, thank God, at, at perhaps a higher level. And we also have Joe is here, my dad, my hero and my assistant, which I say because it irritates him, so I say it. So they just came from Larkspur, where we also had a, this is rate-setting season, so that was our hearing tonight as well. And so what I'd like to present to you just briefly is Ray's ability to discuss diversion numbers and commodity markets. Kim can again talk about the green waste audit, the new laws, 1383, 1826, the bans on organics from going to the landfill and our existing programs. And Garth was absolutely right. Unfortunately, it's been a perfect storm on the efforts to get after zero waste. And probably front and center is our own consumption. And one of the things we plan on doing is continuing to ramp up on, we need to consume far less, especially given the fact that the markets have fallen apart. We said that the cardboard market is down by 35% this year on the heels of 30% last year, I believe. And plastics, I've been saying forever, and so his dad doesn't exist. It just doesn't exist. And what we've been doing is, is offloading all of that stuff on third world countries. And, and so shame on us, they're refusing it now. So this is a lesson for us all. I will bring back a little bit more optimism at the end, but I'd like to just end for now by saying that we are the company with the highest diversion still in the state and the lowest generation at 4.9 pounds per person per day. However, keep in mind that kind of an industrialized country, Italy, a little bit backward, but it's at 2.2. So we have a lot to learn from others. And with that, we're happy to answer any of your questions or go deeper dives into those topics of diversion, commodity markets, laws.
Thanks. Thank you for the overview, Patty. Appreciate it. So any questions for any of the members of the team that are here? Really? Okay. John? Did you say, oh, Bruce?
Yeah. This is not really related to the rates so much, but just in terms of overall where we're moving. How are we doing with the, with the recycling and in particular, the organic waste being non-contaminated and also being, most of the stuff that should be in those streams being in those streams. But those are, getting, getting that separated by, by the consumer so that we can do that.
Sorry. I think we're doing very well, Bruce. We're lucky to still have attached to our compost, the organic status. So we've been very lucky. It's because of our outreach team and all of the education efforts that go into that. In addition, you know, we have several streams. We've got the residential food waste into green waste. We've got commercial food waste and paper that's food-soiled. We've also got the food waste to energy program, which is essentially restaurant cafeteria and the like waste that is collected, that needs to be very low in contamination, that goes off to, gets processed at our facility, collected, processed, and then sent luckily for us, the half mile to CMSA, where it's made into energy, where it's taken CMSA off the grid and joined with biosolids there. So I'm happy to say we've not been like other companies around us. While I don't like to speak on their behalf or against them, we've been able to be just baseload, mainline, stay with our markets. In addition to the decision on my father's part to sustain dual sort recycling, when the hoopla came about single stream recycling, the dual sort has been what's sustained had our markets overseas when others were completely cut off. Albeit ours aren't really paying for the processing, but at least we do have markets. One other issue that we're facing now is with the contracts PG&E has with the biomass plant that we utilize in Woodland that takes our wood waste. It's on our PG&E contract, which we were told was going to terminate February 1. And now it might go two years, it might go five years, but it's still in negotiation. So we really don't know how long it's going to go. And it kind of reminds me of our school board hearing at the County of Marin, where we heard Tuesday, the lights are going off, Wednesday, they're not, Thursday, the lights are going off, Friday, they're not. And we don't want to be dependent upon that kind of contract. So the good news is we're working with MCE in getting a local use of that energy. So procurement of what we bring up there to be used back again by Marin Clean Energy. The challenge with that, because of the bans at the landfill, 1826 says even wood waste can't go to the landfill as an organic. The challenge with that is biomass to produce is about $100 a kilowatt hour. I have that right, right, Roger? And wind and solar are 25 and 40. So we'll be either paying more or rate payers will help in the share or PG&E will be paying a little bit more. We're trying to dice up the pie so that it is actually workable because it cannot go into the landfill. We're also looking at utilizing biomass technology on our own site to take ourselves off the grid. So that's really exciting. We're sort of going through a whole revision of our organics processing. Had one more thought about Marin Clean Energy. It's all good. And I, I think what will happen, oh, and then I'll stop. I had a lot of coffee at 123 Bullinas. You know, I'm so sorry. It is such a great restaurant. I'm sorry it's going. But it's baseload, biomass is. Wind and solar are not. So baseload, we're steady Eddie. And wind and solar, it has to be windy and have sunshine. So we're hoping to make that marriage work with Marin Clean Energy.
You, if I can ask one more question. You, you mentioned wood waste. Just in general, if you take all of the, the tree contractors and people who generate wood waste, where does that go? Does all of it end up being processed the way it should? Or does some of that, do, do some tree contractors take it to the landfill, no matter what you try to do?
Well, you, you kind of see that happen when you see some clover leaves and you see lots of new wood chips. That's sort of an off-ramp for a lot of folks and not necessarily the most proper use of those wood chips, especially if somebody drives by with a cigarette. So our program, we'd like to think is the best use. And it is. It's, it's the one that environmentally is, is the most beneficial. What we're looking at though, is in, in addition to trying to make sure it has a functional market, is an increase with 1826 and 1383, we're looking at probably about an 11%. I think it was 11%, Roger, increase in that flow. In addition to the fire fuel measure that's on the March ballot, that will bring a lot more flow to us. So that whole need for the marriage with Marin Clean Energy will be vital and will be a model, again, Marin County will be the model for the state for the other CCAs to utilize this local energy. Because almost all of those biomass plants are dependent upon PG&E contracts and are being rewritten as we speak because nobody really wants to be in contract with a company that's gone bankrupt.
Well, thank you. And the reason, of course, that I've mentioned that, just to, to explain to the public, is that we all assume that trees are a great way to sequester carbon. But if you look at the whole life cycle of a tree, if the tree sequesters carbon in the biomass of the tree, and then that biomass ends up turning into more carbon in the atmosphere, it doesn't sequester it. So it's, it's really important what you're doing. And it's really important that all of us cooperate with what you're doing and get that to the right place.
And the alternative of putting it into the landfill is certainly far detracting from any sort of effect on greenhouse gas. The biomass solution is far greater, a much more beneficial reuse.
Thank you, Patty. I, I do have a couple of questions, if I may. A couple are for Garth. But before we do that, I wondered if Kim could come up and give us a, tell us the spooky story about 1383. I think we use the number a lot. It's like using acronyms and not explaining them. So this is a bill that's, that none of us are going to escape unscathed from. So Kim, could you just paint the picture of the state, the State of the Union on what the state is telling us we must do?
Yes.
And why?
Okay. I'll try not to be too spooky. Kim Shively, Marin sanitary service. Thank you. 1383 is the next greenhouse gas emission reduction law for the state of California. It is AB 32 on steroids, I like to call it. This, this law actually comes, it's very prescriptive at all levels. It has rules for generators. So for all of us, for commercial businesses, multifamily dwellings. It has rules for haulers, rules for local government, rules for processors, and rules for end users. At each of those levels, it also comes with fines for not doing the right thing. Simply put, the right thing is getting the organics out of the landfill. So Fairfax is actually very well poised to, to start tackling this law because Fairfax has its own local ordinance. You have a mandatory commercial recycling law, not enforced, but it's a law. So that's a start. You also have a residential ban on food waste in, in the landfill carts. Again, not enforced. SB 1383 will force the ordinances to now include enforcement. So that will be the next step. But we've, have a couple more years of educating people. And that's, that's what we've been doing all along, is really educating. And the state isn't seeing results. Stephanie, you mentioned that, that we are really not seeing the targets that we've set for ourselves. It's not just Fairfax. It's, it's the state, it's the world. As, you know, Patty mentioned, things are changing. The, the state of recycling, composting, every day, more and more packaging is created. And that is the overarching issue. And we really do have to get back to our basics, our three Rs again. Reduce first, then reuse, and then recycle. And maybe Renee one time will sing her rap for all of you to remind us to do this. But that is how we save money. That's how we save resources. That's how we save our, our planet. Is there anything else specific you would like me to address? Bottles, jugs, and tubs?
Yeah. Why don't you do that? Two seconds of bottled jugs and tubs.
Okay. And no, that is not a rap song. We have been with plastics, as Patty said, there really is no there there for plastics. There are still a few plastic types that are recyclable and we are able to sell them. And because packaging has changed so drastically, we can't educate by resin types anymore. Those are those numbers one through seven in the pretty little triangle that will eventually go away with legislation because it doesn't mean that it is recyclable. It just means it's, it's a plastic. So we are now educating people on shapes, bottles, jugs, and tubs. So a beverage bottle, a jug would be something like a, a milk jug or a laundry detergent jug. And then a tub is something that the multi-serving yogurts, cottage cheese, things like that come in. And if it doesn't match one of those shapes, we're urging people to please not put it into the recycling because it will go to a landfill. And so I think, Bruce, when you mentioned contamination, it, people get confused because they understand garbage can't go in. They, they understand the diapers and the kitty litter, for the most part. We still do see these random things. But they don't understand that it is a plastic and it has a number on it. And why can't it go into the recycling container? And so while that actually is contamination from, on our standpoint, it does go into a landfill, the public still sees it as recyclable because of those numbers. So we're, we're just, we're resetting and, and really trying to get the message out there that these are the few things that are recyclable. Focus on the things that are, focus on the three Rs, the reduce, reuse, and then recycle. Learn how to recycle properly. We have a brand-new website up. We have a WhereDoesItGoJoe search function on our website. As soon as we can finish the enormous amounts of paperwork with Apple, we'll have our app up and running. So you can put it on your phone and search while you're out shopping. Hey, where did, what, if I bought this, where would I put it afterwards when I need to dispose of it? So we're, we're trying to get the message out there. As far as green waste goes, we will also be messaging to customers a lot on this new program. We did do, we've been doing extensive audits over the years since we implemented food waste in the green waste cart and Fairfax got, got the new contract. We've been seeing really since 2014, a trend in injuries of our, of our drivers from lifting, manually lifting these yard waste containers. And so we started, we didn't want to start right in with, hey, you can't use those owner cans. You've got to use a Marin sanitary tipper cart. So we studied the, the behavior, how many people were putting these out, how many people were getting injured, the cost of the injuries, and then the age also of the drivers that were being injured. And the age of the drivers was coming down. So we were having young, strong workers with shoulder injuries from, from lifting. We started educating. We did a, a lot of campaigns on, on the ability to rent extra Marin sanitary tipper carts, hoping that that would be enough to change behavior and we wouldn't have to say, okay, we've got to come to, to the town and talk about getting rid of these owner cans. It didn't get to that point, though. It just, the injuries kept getting more and more and costlier and costlier for younger and younger drivers, like I said. And so we did come to the table with, with Fairfax and with San and Salmo, a long time ago, with Ross Valley North, to try and resolve this problem. So we'll be educating postcards, direct mail letter, write, flyers, cart hangers. The, the drivers will be leaving cart hangers on all the owner cans throughout this entire year, letting the public know, hey, rent our own cans. And if you get the two in the service bundle and then you rent up, up to four, that's almost two cubic yards of yard waste a week. That's a lot of material. So. Anything else?
That's great. And I'm gonna ask the, Barbara.
Just one question. So on that, can people put out those paper bags that you buy at Ace Hardware for green waste? For example, if they have a big yard cleanup day and they do have the two tipper carts, but it's not enough, can they put out those big paper bags full of yard waste? Or is that still an injury waiting to happen?
So that is actually something that slows the route.
Okay.
That, that goes to efficiencies. However, we're, this year, we're focusing on transitioning everybody out of the owner cans and into our tipper carts. We also have the two scheduled cleanups where customers can put out up to 14 additional 32-gallon cans or bags of garbage recycling or yard waste. We're trying to emphasize to people now to use those paper bags that you're mentioning to put out additional yard waste. You can also use your owner can at that time for that. Because that's a whole different truck and a whole different process for, for getting that material. Then the additional, when there are extras, like those extra paper bags, there will be an additional fee and that's on our rate sheet. And that, that is what we have in, in our other service areas also. Extra garbage is, is a $15 fee. Extra yard waste is a $10- Extra garbage is a $15 fee, extra yard waste is a $10 fee. Those are both things that have disposal costs attached to them also.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Garth, could you talk about the WST, the Water Sewer Trash Index? And I think it's confusing when you look at, where you talk about that there's between a two and a 5% allowable increase in operational costs, but then you look at the index that controls our water and our sewer, and our rates have gone sky high. And I'm not sure that that's clear for the public, how that works, and why we're being told that it's not going to go up more than 2% to 5%. What's that based on?
Great. Great question. And stop me if I'm not being clear. So in the indexed years under the new methodology, which is essentially the default unless the town or the company in those five-year opportunities call for a detailed cost-based look. But in this indexed year, essentially what will happen is the compensation to the town for its collection operations will be escalated by that WST CPI index with a minimum of 2% and a maximum of 5. So someone can run the numbers, you can look at the year-over-year change in this index. And if that year-over-year change in the index comes in at 6%, well, they only get 5. If it comes in at 1.5%, they get 2. And it's a floor and a ceiling, essentially, to that overall index amount. That will be the adjustment for roughly 75 to 80% of the rate, which is the kind of fixed cost of the collection operations operated by Marin San. There is an additional component to the rate, which is essentially for the pass-through elements, meaning the cost of disposing of the garbage, the cost of, you know, composting the organics, and the cost of processing the recycling. Those aren't subject to the index, frankly, because those are costs that are essentially outside of the company's control. They're dependent upon, one, how much people put out. If everybody in Fairfax or, say, Marin County puts out 10% more next year, well, they'll have a 10% increase in that post-collection pass-through cost through no fault of their own. It's based on how much actual waste generation occurs. And then the second part that they don't have control over is what are the landfills' tipping rates for garbage, or the landfills' composting rates for organics, or what happens in the recyclables marketplace in terms of revenues going up or down. So those additional components will be escalated essentially outside of that index, but they represent 20% to 25% of the overall rate. And I should mention that on the recyclables piece, if there is a market recovery of some sort, the way the mechanism works is ratepayers will have an opportunity to share in that or benefit from it. Meaning if the trends that we've seen in the recyclables marketplace were start to reverse, that benefit would accrue to the ratepayer, though the converse is true. If we see recyclable markets continue to decline, reducing the revenue to the company, or really, what would that be, an increase in expense to the company, that would also be passed through in the same way like a garbage landfill cost would. I hope that makes it clearer.
Yeah, I think that was really helpful. And then, last thing is, so we, by contract, would be looking at, every five years, we would have the opportunity to do a more detailed review. What if the rest of the franchise group or the other municipalities in the service district say, we don't want to, and we want to? So that, we then incur costs that would have been defrayed by...
By others participating. That's right. Although nothing really precludes you, and this is explicit in the agreement, nothing precludes you and the company mutually agreeing, hey, this is something that we mutually, mutually and beneficially want to be able to look at. And whether that's a full cost-based review, or, hey, we want to look at adding a new program, we want to meet and confer in good faith to add a new program and negotiate what the reasonable costs are of that new program and roll it into the rates, or we want to look at, you know, look, you've been giving us reports over the last three years. Fairfax residents are starting to do a more amazing job. We've seen solid waste tonnages and recycling tonnages and organics tonnages all decline. We really want to take a hard look at that. Nothing precludes you and the company from being able to do those, either absent the other MSS agencies taking action, or on a non-scheduled year.
Along the same lines, in the next 10 years, we're going to see great advances, is my hope, and they may be more costly. Or we may see more efficiencies that make things less costly. So can we confer any time we want? Let's say I'm reading The New York Times and someone else has figured out something that I think is, what are the parameters on negotiating new services or disregarding old services that are not useful?
Great question. I mean, it's detailed in Exhibit B to the agreement. It's the very last provision, which is the rate methodology. Exhibit B is all the rate methodology stuff. If you want to get a good bedtime reading, go for it. But at the very end of it, it says, basically, you as the town have the ability to be able to create town-directed changes, right? Either, say, we want to negotiate away a set of services, or we want to negotiate in a new set of services, either resulting in a deduction or an increase to the overall compensation to the company. You have that ability, it's specified there, and you can essentially do it at any time. You know, depending on what the idea is, the company may be willing to negotiate around that or not, but, you know, the trend and the pattern has been that if there's a good idea out there, that they've been willing to do so.
Okay, unless there's anything else, let's go out to the public. Please, if you have any questions or comments, come forward, and then if Patty and the team are available to respond to some of the things that the public expresses, that would be terrific.
Mayor, this is a public hearing, you need to open the...
I would like to open the public hearing on this item, so, thank you, Barbara.
Richard Applebaum, 61 Woodland. So like any consumer, we don't like to see our rates go up. And there was a big jump last year, and so the fact that it sounds like there's going to be another one is a little bit alarming. That said, hearing the consultant's presentation and hearing from the company, you know, as a person, I'd like things to be fair and reasonable. So if in your esteemed wisdom, you feel like this new direction, a new methodology, and using the index or whatever is going to keep us in a good place, I'm probably okay with that. My issue personally, and I may be, you know, the outlier, but I'm one of those people that ends up with 28 of those lawn bags in the end of the summer and the fall. I have 12 redwood trees next to my house, and the duff sheds like crazy. And I learned over time, because I didn't know how it worked, and I was a new homeowner a few years ago, that I'm only allowed to put four or five of those out at a time without getting charged. And if I heard things correctly, I'm going to be sent in the direction of getting two greens and having to somehow make my time of the year when I accumulate 25 to 30 bags of yard waste, mainly leaves. I'm not, I'm going to have to manage that somehow, or I'm going to have to rent more green things and sort of make that work, or I'm eventually going to get charged $10 a bag. I don't know exactly what I heard, but that's concerning. So I can't really be in favor of that personally. I don't know, things are leveled out across the whole town, and I'm one person. I happen to live in a, my house is backed against many hills, I have hundreds of trees around me, and I have 12 redwoods. So that's concerning and problematic, and I can't support that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Council members, staff, fellow citizens, my name is Chris Lang. I live on Canyon Road. I was one of the original Fairfax Festival committee members to organize the garbage and porta-potties, the waste management, and negotiated with the local garbage company so it was included in their franchise agreement. Then I sat on the Fairfax Solid Waste Franchise Advisory Committee overseeing the two brothers' sale to the Rado Company of the local Fairfax garbage company. And one of the things we wrote into that contract was the support for the Fairfax Festival because it had been traditional, and so that became part of the contract, the rule of law, as it were. So the new proposal to simply designate a cash figure for support of the Fairfax Festival seems reasonable to me. I'm not gung-ho about it, but it seems like, since the town is no longer stinting the purse strings about the festival, with good reason, thank you, it seems reasonable that that's an acceptable proposal. The other thing that I'm mostly concerned about as a professional fire hazard reductions technician, I've been a landscape gardener 50 years, is the reduction in the cans. And I completely understand the Garberino's reluctance to continue their program based on driver injuries. But first of all, I want to laud the family and the company. No one takes a backseat to them in trying to boost recycling and such, and they say they've got the best rate in the state. It's because we all work together on it, and really have to give them kudos for the work they've done. And I've seen all the little flyers and stuff like that. But the bottom line for me is, if I can't put out my own cans of stuff and I have to get the tipper carts, that works okay on some properties in Fairfax, but other properties, like my little house on Ridge Road, it's a third of an acre, there's no way I can store those, a bunch of green carts down in front of the property. And the beauty of the garbage cans is we can carry them down there and then stack them in the corner because we don't have room for all those green cans, a minor logistical detail. The gist of my comments is that fire hazard reduction is really important in Fairfax. It's still not even close to compliance. There's a Firewise sign up there at this corner scenic in Tamil Piyas, and there's eight-foot scotch broom and dead oak trees and acacia trees right there. So from my perspective, it looks like it's not working. Of course, I know it's working. You guys have dedicated more money in the budget to fire hazard reduction, which is really important. But I think one of the most important key elements of fire hazard reduction in Fairfax is to continue on the free extra green waste pickup, be it in cans, or bags, or tipper carts, or whatever. The tipper carts are logistical problem, the bags work when it's dry out. And I understand the garbage cans, the owner-owned are a problem for the company. But I most strongly urge you to keep some more element of fire hazard reduction, more green waste recycling, without extra fees and carts and such like that. And we could continue to work and evolve in the future, but for me personally, that's the most important thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, next speaker. I just want to remind everyone to just keep one eye, one brief glance over at the clock as you're speaking so you can time yourselves. Thanks.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Susan Beersa Chudak. I've been a resident of Fairfax for close to 25 years in Deer Park. And in that time, I too have had remarkable, reliable, capable service from MSS, and no complaints about that at all. And I really, I hear a lot in the presentations about efforts to innovate at the cost level on your part. But what I'd like to encourage, my goal here, is to encourage some innovative thinking where the buck stops. We have, we conserve water, yet the prices go up. We conserve electricity, yet the prices go up. We do what we can to be responsible with garbage, yet the prices go up and up again. My real objection is that there is no option for us, aside from having a smaller landfill cart. No option at all. I can't have no garbage service because that's unlawful. I can't share my cans. There was something said that I didn't quite understand about the possibility of sharing, which I'd love to hear more about. I can't have every other week recycling pickup if I don't need it every week. I just don't have any options that will cut down my costs if I want to be responsible and do so. I know that there was, at least I think I know, there was an effort to inspect some cans and make sure that people weren't making, contaminating things, which of course feels like Big Brother. But instead of, you know, we could have some opt-in programs by people who volunteer to do the right thing, to reduce their costs. I'm a small business owner and a business strategist and have offered brainstorming time for months now on this subject. I'll renew that offer with anyone who wants to talk about it. I've got some ideas I'd like to, you know, maybe we could think of something that could work. Maybe we could look at how they're doing this in forward-thinking places like Boulder or the Twin Cities or Portland. Maybe they're doing something we haven't thought of. I know it takes more manpower to do something that's different from everybody the same, but maybe in the long run, that could be more practical. Thanks.
Thank you, Susan. Next speaker, please. Hi, Cindy.
Cindy Swift, Fairfax. I want to speak as well on the residential... Better? On the residential organics collection, which does away with up to five extra 32-gallon cans. Fairfax has close to 10 Firewise neighborhoods now. The latest one is Willow Evacuation Group, which was certified last month. These neighborhoods have made great strides in removing vegetation and improving their defensible space, which those extra containers have facilitated. It would have been a good idea, in my opinion, to have done some outreach to those Firewise neighborhood leaders to get feedback on the proposed change and its effect on their efforts in their neighborhoods. I don't believe that occurred, so many may not be aware of these proposed changes. I found out about it by finding one of Marin Sanitary's door hangers that said this was going into effect January 2nd, 2021, if I've got that right, and that customers had between now and then where they could order that extra free 64-gallon container. I don't want to lose the momentum we have built in Fairfax with the help of those extra customer-owned containers. Many people do not have space for another 64-gallon container on their property that will sit empty most of the year or half of the year, but they may have extra 32-gallon containers that they utilize throughout the year for a variety of tasks on their property. The need for us to maintain our defensible space and remove vegetation is more critical at certain times of the year than others. I would like to suggest that we keep that same capability, but only for a shorter calendar period, say, half the year, that we get those weekly pickups. And then the downside, the other half of the year, the winter, we don't do that. That would help the residents maintain their vegetation and would take a little load off Marin Sanitary. Thank you.
Wait, Cindy, before you go, could you make, could you just restate the actual proposal of what you were just saying?
Is to maintain the current contract, which allows for up to five 32-gallon customer-owned to be put out every week, plus those equivalent biodegradable bags. And I'm not as concerned about those, but those are in the contract now. But do it for a shorter period of time. Let's say, you know, March through September, or something like that, the six months when people are doing most of their vegetation management and removing their vegetation. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Mallory.
Mallory Godham, Willow Avenue. I agreed with the last, pretty much, everybody, speakers, and about having to, I use about five inches of garbage every week at the most. And we have a 20, now we have a 20-gallon small can. Maybe to save people, like the woman who talked before Cindy, we could have a 10-gallon can for people who use less. I am, I also, I just want to go on record to say that I don't want another tilt pail. They're just, they take up a lot of space. I don't have really any sidewalk place, and it just goes into my carport. So I like the idea of just having stacked a few cans, the way Richard said, and I hope we can do that. And then the new prices were $10 and $15 for each, for extra cans per, which...
After two, then you can pay $2.26 a month per extra green cart, up to four more.
Oh, why did I hear $10 and $15? Was that about something?
Could we get a clarification, Kim?
Hi. Sorry. Mallory? Mallory, nice to meet you. Okay, so clarification. The program right now is you would have two 64-gallon carts in the service bundle. The program right now is you would have two 64-gallon carts in the service bundle. And then you could rent an additional four 64-gallon carts, tipper carts, that are picked up by the automated vehicle and not lifted manually by any driver. Those are about, I think on the rate sheet, it's $2.26. I don't have the rate sheet in front of me. So that's the nominal, that's a monthly fee per cart. There's also for people who have a lot of extra yard waste doing your cleanups, we have debris boxes that you can rent, and those are at a 15% discount when you call in and say, this is for my yard waste cleanup and not just for, you know, general debris. So that is something else we offer. You can also use your cleanup days, the scheduled cleanup days, to put out those extra bags. The fees we've had on our rate sheets for years, and some people have already been receiving and paying for those extra bags in Fairfax for at least three years. We're going to kind of overlook all of that for this transition year and just focus on moving people out of the owner cans and into the tipper carts. I hope that clarified. We also, the other thing that should not be overlooked is the fact that the town has many, many chipper days. And chipper days have been added to various communities. And in the contract, that volume has increased for those chipper days and the material that can be brought to the, to the different locations around the town.
Okay, that was overlooked in, in the presentation. And just quickly, as of today, prior to this contract that's before us, what are we allowed in terms of green waste services?
One, one tipper cart and up to five owner cans.
And what about the bags?
It's bags or cans.
Up to five?
Yes, up to five.
All right, thank you, Kim.
If I could just illuminate the need to move away from customer-owned carts. At any one time, we have nine young men under the age of 35 who've had surgery because of the lifting in the Upper Ross Valley of these customer-owned carts. This is not a question of necessarily efficiency or the increased cost to us of workers' compensation. It's a humane concern. This is not industry standard to have young people picking up carts that weigh a great deal and having screws put in their shoulders and then having the screws ripped out when they come back on the job. It just can't continue. We've given many, many, many options, the chipper days, the occasional, the idea of occasional days is good because we all have that in the fall. But I think the company has really extended itself a great deal, primarily to protect those men that pick up all of that waste and make it most efficient. The service, again, is designed for the average customer. If you have 20, 25, 30 carts, as Kim, or bags, Kim said, it's time to start looking at a dumpster on occasion, and then we give a discount. But in order to fit the need for the most, in order to keep our overall rate as low as we possibly can, we designed the program the way that we did. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. So are you, did you finish your time, Valerie?
Sorry, one last thing. Our service is not just about that black cart. It's about a bundled rate. So while, like I do, as, as someone who lives alone as a widow, I don't have much garbage either, but I also pay for my green waste, I have two a week, and my recycling. So it has to be considered in a bundled effect. Thanks, sir.
Great, thank you. Mallory, do you want to finish up and we'll keep going?
Thank you. And also, this is, it's not an either, either/or thing. Do we get to negotiate this? Or is it just, we either do this or, I mean, how does, how is this going to work?
We're listening to, to public comments, some things we've not heard prior to this public hearing. So then we will deliberate and decide how we want to proceed.
For the, this seems like a lot, you know, you guys do a great job and this seems like a lot of money for people to have to come up with who, you know, are already having a harder time, hard time.
Thank you, Mallory.
Thanks.
Okay, next speaker, please.
Mark Bell, Fairfax. There should be no automatic extension. When this contract is up, it should be put out to bid. Maybe Marin Sanitary will have the best bid, maybe not. But when 3R was here several months ago, they said there was another company that, whose rates were lower, and they were looking to expand their business. It would possibly take two or three years, but we might see comparable rates to Marin Sanitary after a period of time. Well, I'd rather pay less money for three years and then look at it again. We generate like half of a 11-gallon garbage can of waste about a week. We put out the recycle cart maybe once a month. The green can usually goes out, sometimes it's full, sometimes it's half, sometimes it's a third. And yet we continue to pay, and I'm sure that we are not alone in Fairfax. So when I'm looking at people who are reducing, and I'm sure a lot of people in Fairfax have, then why did our rates go up 20%? That was the highest raise in all of Marin County. And we paid a consultant to get us the highest rate. I remember years ago when Larry Braggman was on the council and he was trying to get some financial figures regarding the recycling, et cetera, and then there weren't forthcoming from Marin Sanitary. There's a lot of things that they do that are good, but let's look at the possibility of another company. We have a staff I'm sure can read a garbage contract or compare two garbage contracts and figure it out. I mean, you'd think so for the million or so that we pay them a year. And if not, maybe we need to look elsewhere. But I think what we're looking at here, oh yeah, and additionally, at the last meeting on this, there were comments from the town council about how a lot of this raise of our rates was going into raises for the employees. I've talked to employees that haven't gotten a raise, so I don't know what, where that came out of. So I mean, it's pretty disingenuous to say something that's not true. Furthermore, it took me over six days to get a Christmas tree picked up. I had a call like four or five times. I had this lady basically accuse me of being a liar, and I made her listen, to go back and listen to the tape where this woman told me that my tree would be picked up the next day. It still took like another five days. Today, or yesterday was a day for pickup on my street. Several clean Christmas trees were out. They're still there, sitting in the sidewalk. Nice public safety.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Next speaker, please.
Deborah Benson, Cascade Drive. I have a problem with, with the rate increase and the service decrease. I have a problem with more plastic being manufactured, these big green cans, when we're all full of plastic, because there's so much plastic in the world, and I would like us to be a little more progressive. I understand the, the issue around the injuries, but I would like to see us somehow use those paper bags. Those paper bags are light, the, the actual volume is small. You can't put things in them that, you can't put big sticks in them or they'll punch holes. They won't hold heavy rocks. So I'd like to see us be a little more progressive. I live in the woods. I live in Cascade Canyon. I have trees all around my place. I have a business. I'm a really active person. I, on a whim, get out the rake. I don't have a gardener. I get out the rake and I clean my yard. I have some of those bags in my garage. I fill them up, I put them out. I don't do it every weekend. I do it when I can, I do it on impulse. So this occasional, twice-a-year pickup doesn't really fit my lifestyle. I think that there is a fire issue. I think that decreasing our ability to at impulse, on impulse, do a cleanup of our yard and put out those five extra bags is adding to the fire danger. So I would like to see us come to some sort of a compromise about these, these extra cans. I don't have room to put even one more extra green can in, in my yard to store. I'd like to see us be a little more progressive, not manufacture more plastic, and try to figure out a way to use paper. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, council. When I think of Marin Sanitary Service, I see them as a necessity. I see them as a company that is really extending themselves and doing a good job. I certainly see the Garberinos as managing us, but I also see the Anna, the Anita, the Ryan, the Jose, the people that I specifically deal with, David, actually Dave. But these are the people that I actually speak and like, how do we get things? So as recently as yesterday, I took the time to save all my metal, and I said, okay, this time bring me a five-yard box. Since it's all metal, they didn't even charge me. They said, okay, we can recycle that. So they got all the metal. They will always help you. So whenever I have a need and I can separate the things that I take out in dumpsters or my garbage, they're always there to help me. Okay? These things about the different sized carts, honestly, if I was the company, I'd say no. This would not be for negotiation. I'd say, we can accommodate a uniform shape with a uniform volume so we can judge that, so we can fairly bill that, so we can anticipate our costs. We have, somebody having a little coffee can, somebody having a huge dumpster, these are different amounts. They can't guess on their truck and their routes how we can make that whole round and pick everything up and be efficient to pass those savings on to us. So as a company, they've got to look for uniformity so that they can avoid these injuries. The injury is when somebody comes up and says, okay, here's something different. How am I going to get this? What am I going to do with it? But the other things that I see about Marin Sanitary Service, and hence my great appreciation for them, I've seen for me as an individual, which I can speak to, and I'm sure everybody else has this opportunity. When I, for instance, did the erosion work in the creek, and I called around and I needed five fish habitats, large stumps, I started calling around. People started saying, oh, 1,200 bucks and now, ah, but there's this drainage cost. And I said, wow, you know, this is another 10 grand I can't afford. I called up Joe Garberino, and he said, well, yeah, we, we sell these things. What do you need it for? And I said, for restoration of the creek, that's going to benefit the whole community. And he said, come on down. And so he drove me around, we looked at all this stuff coming in from the floods of 2017, and he said, what size do you need? And I said, actually, for diversity of my fish, Army Corps of Engineers just said three, but I'd like to diversify that. So he took the time and brought a driver out, and we got a bay stump, we got an oak, we got a willow, we got him a drone. And then he said, okay, this is going to benefit the community. Put him in to dumpster, take him out there. He didn't charge us. Yes, he is kind to me, but he really did this for the entire community. These are the things in the background why we want to keep a company like this here. I too don't want to absorb these costs. My tenants can't afford this, so basically I'm subsidizing this. But I know there are certain commodities and certain services, when somebody will pick up the phone and do a great job, that you want to compliment. If anything else, you want to say, they're leading by the example. I wish that all the other industries could operate this way. That's how I'd like you to think of this company. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Thanks, mayor, members of the council. Tom McCag, 47 Creek Road. I had some questions about the contract. And first of all, I'd like to just say I appreciate so much the explanations of, of this contract that's about to be renewed. But my questions are about performance language in the contract. One of the slides that was shown mentioned performance metrics to be established. And so my first question would be, who's establishing those metrics?
Excuse me, one second. Garth, would you, would you take note of these questions, please? Thank you.
So first question would be, who's establishing those metrics and how? And also, what is the mechanism for those metrics to be updated as necessary? Kind of aligned with a previous question you had about what Fairfax does have control of and doesn't have control of. And the second question is just about the performance review and the terms for that performance review, and what are the obligations to perform that the company will have? Is that something that has been tossed around, discussed by you all yet? Or, and if not, what are the milestones for the decisions on that? Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the good questions. I'm going to ask, before we ask for a response, are there any other questions or comments from the public? I'm going to just have everyone speak once, Chris, okay? This, we had a lot going on. So could you hold it until later? Thank you. Garth, would you care to comment on or respond to those?
So are you closing the public hearing?
Yes. I am going to close the public hearing, and then we can hear from Patty and Garth, and then we can come back to, to the council. Okay. Thank you, Garrett.
Just pulling up agreement language and notes, bear with me a moment. So with respect to the performance language in the contract and the performance metrics, those metrics are primarily related to outreach education and effective diversion performance. One of the things that was recognized by both the company and the Marin Franchisers Group and the town with respect to, say, the annual report that comes out, is those metrics are changing a little bit year to year as MSS learns kind of a little bit more about what folks are doing and how to report those things. But one of the challenges has been making those be, demonstrate how, one, they're being consistent year to year, and what, and focusing on the metrics that are really of most importance with respect to reducing the amount of waste that goes to landfill and reducing waste overall. So the, to answer the question directly, who is establishing and how? That's established by mutual work between the town and the company, and that has yet to occur. What's the mechanism for updating those as necessary? It would be mutual meet and confer between the town and the company. And then with respect to the performance reviews, I can give some more specifics because this is a bit more detailed in the agreement than the metrics, which is really contemplating the fact that you need a metric and that the company needs a metric that's going to move us towards greater diversion. We've typically looked at this as a percent diversion, how much of the overall waste goes to recycling or composting instead of landfilling. But the course of the last 15 years across the state is that percent diversion isn't a great metric. It's not achieving the outcomes. So this is really a challenge and an exercise in what is the next metric? And that's to be determined between the town and the company directly. Now with respect to the performance review, whom calls for it is the Marin Franchisers Group set of agencies, which essentially includes the town as a part of the service area. It's performed, I'm just trying to see. Performance review would be designed to verify whether rates have been properly calculated, properly assessed to customers, that fees have been paid to the town correctly, that reporting to the town has been done accurately with respect to the performance standards established between the town and the company. Some of the things that are often looked at in a performance review are customer service times, response times to missed pickups, how long are folks on the phone? Are there, are there complaints resolved in a timely fashion? How many complaints are coming in? How does the company compare to other companies in terms of industry best practices and metrics? And then compliance and internal auditing functions, this is really about a collection on bad debt, safety practices, permitting practices, the various aspects that they have to have under a variety of state laws and regulations for having safe and functional operations. That's the high-level snapshot on the performance review piece.
Okay, thanks, Garth. And just so people know, there are semi-annual reports that are submitted that are very user-friendly, that sort of talk in human language, all of the things that Garth just shared with us. So those are all obviously in the archives, and there will be one. Garrett, when's our next annual, our next report due?
Kim says March 1st.
Okay, there you go. So we'll have an update, and it speaks to some of the, some of the concerns and questions you've asked. So Patty, did you want to say one more thing? Okay, terrific.
Addressing a couple of the statements that were made or questions, if I may. I'm very much familiar with the Portland usage of every other week collection of waste. It's been an experiment that's not worked out well for the customers, especially in the summertime when it becomes hot and the odor is an issue, frankly. 20-gallon carts utilized here in Fairfax, somebody mentioned that they would like to see more of those used. We did an audit once of the 20-gallon carts, all but four were overflowing, and the overflow means that they were going into the recycling container, which is not good. We're using renewable diesel on the positive side. It's made out of stuff that don't want to go into tonight, but it's far more energy-efficient. to go into tonight, but it's far more energy efficient, cheaper, and it's also more, it's beneficial for the environment as well. And I just want to thank you for letting me be the mama tiger about my drivers, my colleagues. This is an issue that has been historic with the prior hauler who was referred to by Garth earlier. It had been allowed and abused. It's not being abused by any of the people that spoke here, but when it got to nine drivers under the age of 35, it was just untenable and we don't have that issue elsewhere. We also don't have the same issue that that prior hauler did with the co-mingling of garbage, recycling and green waste, which was what they were doing. We're a completely different company. We protect the environment and I also feel like I need to protect the drivers. So thanks for putting up with that.
Thank you. I see we're going to get to hear from the famous Joe Garberino. I'm glad you're here, Joe. Thanks for sharing some time with us.
You've heard two hours now of dialogue on the subject of these bags. Is it fair to pick up 20 to 30 free bags every week from anybody? It's not fair. Now, we're willing to do what we said we were going to do and we're giving more cans out, but it's grossly unfair to pick that many every week. If you have such a big week, cut everything, order a big debris box and haul it away. And then you're back to normal after that. But if you put 20 bags out every week, you should pay for that. It's only fair. If you go to the gas station and get 20 extra gallons, they charge you. You go to the grocery store, you get 20 more of something, you're going to get charged. You have to look at yourselves and ask yourselves when you vote, is it fair? That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
It's not every week. It's once a year. I get accumulation over one or two weeks that can raise up to that level. And what I've been doing is I put five bags a week out for over five or six weeks.
Richard, I think we understand. I think that, right. So no, I don't, Joe, just for clarification, no one's asking for 20 bags a week or 10 bags a week. I think it's the way this gentleman was calculating his overall needs. So, thank you though. So let's bring it back up here. Any deliberation, conversation, let's go ahead. Barbara, please.
So I just want to say thank you to Marin Sanitary. And I read the IJ and so I see what the rates are across the county. I believe Fairfax is still about the lowest. And some of the other companies that service the county are much higher. So I think we're, and I think your record of recycling and helping us meet our, to the extent we can, our zero waste goals, I think we can do it with you. I also want to say thank you to Patty for mentioning, and Joe mentioning, the drivers and the injuries with picking up those extra carts. I think we don't like change and people got used to that. I can say, I'm sitting here waiting for shoulder surgery, having torn my rotator cuff off the bone. So I know, and I'm much older than 35, I know that those guys picking up those heavy carts and throwing them into the tipper is going to be a shoulder injury waiting to happen, if not tearing it off the bone, incredible strain. I know from my own experience that the recovery is brutal from surgery and you're looking at two months minimum immobile arm and six months to a year or two to complete recovery. So even though those guys are a lot younger than me, they're always going to have some problems because they're always going to be picking up this kind of stuff. So I hear what people are saying and concerns about being able to clean their yards. But I think the option of getting the extra tipper cart, having two, and I think even though a lot of people in Fairfax have small homes, they may be able to find a place to store that if they need to have that. But also in the off time where you need to rent more, I'm assuming you can rent those, you know, on a monthly basis. You don't have to be sitting there with four extra carts. So I like that option. I think we, and I also, from what I understand, this will be phased out over time. I really do say, we have to really care about those drivers. I give them candy at Christmas and always wave to them. And I don't even know them, but I think they have a hard job. And so I think we need to support them and also support their physical health and wellbeing in doing this job that not many of us could do or would be able to do. So I'm supportive of the contract. I also like the, the way we're doing the rates so we won't have to do those true-ups every few years. And R3 is kind of working themselves out of kind of a job this way. But I also think that we'll be seeing an even increase over time so people can plan for it. I still think your rates are quite competitive compared to looking across the county and what's happening in West Marin with huge increases that I, I think are probably important and need to happen. But we're still at very low rates. So I just want to say I support the contract. I support this change and I think for those of us, and I'm not one of them who has a lot of yard waste, over time, we can get used to this new way of doing business and also making sure for the health and safety of the drivers. So thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Who would like to, to negotiate, deliberate, converse? Bruce?
Well, I'll just second what Barbara said. I agree with, with all that. And I see a lot of integrity in Marin Sanitary and also in R3 Consulting, which it, as, as Barbara mentioned, R3 is helping us with a more streamlined process and therefore probably have less work for themselves. So I think this is all, I understand the reasons for the directions that, that are being proposed here. I think they are the best, the best option we can see at this point. But hearing from the public, it sounds like two issues that I don't really have a solution, well, one, one that I don't have a solution to right now, but I just encourage Marin Sanitary to keep thinking about this. If there was a way to design the carts to where they were stackable so that when they were empty and we had to store them on our, on our property, we could, they took up less room, that would be helpful to people. And, and then the other is just how you, how we individually deal with the, the variation through the year. One way is to rent a dumpster, but then another way, what, what we do, and we've already been doing this all along, because I have recognized that the people who collect the green waste, it's a lot easier for them if they do it with a green cart. So I sort of proactively have been working on not putting out our cans that we had, our privately owned cans, but we use those cans to buffer things. And so if we do a big cleanup, we'll have a few cans that we put out over the course of a couple of weeks by putting them into the green cart. And they are heavy to pick up just for myself, putting them into the green cart. So anyway, that's, that's our solution for it. So in general, I, I support the, the current proposal. I think it's the best thing we can do at this point and I appreciate everyone's work.
John?
Okay. Well, a number of things. I mean, I guess I brought up the extra can thing and that's, that's a new approach to it. And there's different workarounds, like Bruce just talked about one workaround here. And obviously renting a big dumpster, if you've got that much debris that's generated, it's difficult, you know, to coordinate, you know, make sure everything's piled up just before a chipper day and then you get it all down there. And, and you know, that means that weekend, you're doing nothing but hauling stuff down for the chipper. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. And obviously it's, it's a self-management thing and it's learning how to do it. However, you know, I mean, that's the last couple of years, especially with all the extra, I mean, there's a lot more green waste that is being created. I know where I am in all around Fairfax, just because of, you know, fire danger. You know, I'm, I'm really conscious in getting a lot of the, the fire-prone debris out, you know, especially before fire season. It's difficult, but I think on doing that, you know, part of, part of it is coordinating with chipper days, but part of it is, is, you know, just doing that. I think getting communication back and forth so that people really know how much more it costs per can. I mean, actually I, Mallory asked that question here and a couple of people spoke from Marin Sanitary. And, you know, I got to say is, nobody said, oh, it's 15 bucks, you know, and it's, says that on here. So that is uncomfortable news to say, but people have to know if it's really 15 bucks, which I think is-
What's 15 bucks, sorry?
It says for an extra empty bag or an extra bag of yard waste, it's $15 charge.
That's if you've put out more than you're allowed?
Yeah, if you put out more than, than what the thing is. But that was the question that was asked. And, you know, that's not fun news to deliver, but if people know that that's the case, they will modify their behavior so that they don't have to pay that extra 15 bucks. I mean, I know I, last summer, I was billed the extra 15 bucks for extra cans and I had no idea, well, where did this come from? And it took a couple of calls into Marin Sanitary to figure out why. And then, you know, there was another week where, you know, they picked up two cans, but not the other three. And I'm like, well, why? And, okay, well, because there's stuff in those cans that is on the list, you know, palm fronds, for instance, are not picked up. But that information was never communicated to me prior to that. So, you know, and it took several phone calls just to figure that out. So I think it really behooves everybody to have the communication happen upfront just so that people can modify that, you know, figure out how they're going to solve this problem. I do like the evening out of the rates and using the R3's approach here, even though they are kind of putting themselves out of business in the long run. I mean, maybe not completely out of business, but they're, they're kind of evening out the curve. I mean, yes, I was frankly kind of shocked at how high the rate change was this last time, or last April. But I did remember that the time before, we, it was reduced, you know, which was also a, you know, just because the price of oil, as Garrett was saying, was dropped. And so those rates were based on these fluctuating prices. And hopefully, because this is kind of a, an area average for a lot of things in this industry, these prices are realistic and that will allow Marin Sanitary to operate as a viable business as well as people to get a, a realistic change in the rates, you know, that, that doesn't bounce around so much. Because that's, that's the sticker shock that, you know, brings a lot of people into the meeting, you know. Let me see, I guess on the performance review, I didn't really get how many people are a part of that, you know, I guess that's more of a question. How many people are part of that group that gets the performance review? I mean, is, is that-
Garrett, can you respond to that, please?
Maybe. Garth can. The contract, I believe, is saying performance reviews can be conducted by the manufacturer, manufacturers group. The franchisers group in Fairfax and San Selma are included as part of that group.
Yeah.
It's the seven member agencies that are served by Marin Sanitary Service. So it would be kind of a service area-wide approach to that, which is appropriate in our point of view, partially because this is all provided through one base company. There's one company that serves all of those seven agencies. There's not individual financial statements or individual customer service centers or operations or hubs of operations. It's one operation serving all seven of the, the agencies.
But Garth, how does that work for us if we're not members of the franchise group?
So it, and it's really the way it's kind of defined is like, one, you have an opportunity to essentially kind of participate in that de facto now at this point. The way we look at it is it's if, if the service area calls for it, then it applies to everybody evenly. Does that make sense?
Garth, there's, MSS provides the funding to provide for the performance review of the franchisers group. We use, say, a third party to do the evaluation.
And essentially, it's, it's open to the town at this point to participate in that group.
Yeah. Well, that makes sense.
Whereas there was essentially a difference in treatment, both on rate methodology and a few other terms and conditions, which through this action would essentially nullify that.
Okay. Thanks. I guess those are pretty much my comments, you know, just communication around things and just so people can make realistic choices. And it's, it's, I mean, we've spent a lot of time on this item here because people have questions. And but it's a good thing to have communication there about it. Obviously, it's not one size fits all because some properties have very little space to store stuff and they've got to figure out a workaround. You know, I live on a flatter place, but it generates a lot of debris. So, you know, I'll probably, like Bruce, continue to use my cans, but get another tipper cart and spread it out, you know, and then in the big wave, use the chipper days or a dumpster if needed, but hopefully not because they're expensive too. So, thanks.
Okay, thanks, John. Stephanie, I mean, Councilmember Hellman.
Yeah, thank you. I'll be brief. I want to thank you all. I learned a lot this evening, so thank you. So just to reiterate, fundamentally, I just have a problem with rate increases twice within a, a year, just from a consumer advocacy standpoint. I just, it's a problem for me to get behind something like that. And I don't know to what degree you are customizing these for every township across Marin, but it does feel like the needs of Fairfax, as I, I did get emails about this and as I heard from residents this evening, particularly the, the recommendation from Cindy Swift, which I thought was very strong, it would be nice to have a window, right? We're, we're really trying to get serious about vegetation management and hardening and so forth. It would be really nice if we could support, you know, our residents in this regard. And chipper days are great, but not everybody is around and available and can accommodate chipper days, right? So I'll just leave it at that. If, that would be my preference, is if we could amend to accommodate that suggestion or proposal.
If I may, the fire fuel measure meets here in classrooms, so we're very much behind that as well.
I could barely hear you and I don't know that I even understood what you said. Could you-
Sorry. I apologize. I forgot to mention, we're very much behind the fire fuel measure that's coming up and are preparing and ramping up for that. It meets in our classroom, the campaign does. So we are very much supporters of all of what was discussed about reducing fire fuel and danger and are getting our equipment ready to be able to handle the onslaught of that material.
Okay, but that still doesn't really address the fact that people are regularly, you know, trimming and weeding and, you know, trying to get the whole regularity with vegetation management and, and it's, and incurring a fee related to that now, right? But thank you.
You're welcome.
Great response. Okay. So, thank you, everyone. I, you know, I've worked really hard on this contract and I've worked very hard with Marin Sanitary over many years, mostly on the, how are these services being actually executed in our community? And in the, the response generally, as we as sustainable Fairfax and myself personally, as a council member, have been out in the community, Marin Sanitary is doing an excellent job informing people, being present. Their outreach team is, is superior. And, and there are some excellent, excellent points that have been raised here today. I'm very concerned myself about the, we want as much vegetation out of our hills and out of our neighborhoods as humanly possible. And it seems as though nothing should prevent that from happening. When I do the numbers, I look at, if we get two free 64 gallon carts, we've got 128 gallons versus 32 gallon, our own personal 32s, five of them is 160 gallons. But we can for $2.26 a month pay for an extra, which takes us up over that number. I don't like plastic carts, Deborah, I'm right there with you. But I also know if you want to look at cost and you want to look at reusability, the cost of a bag of those bags is, is extra- those bags is extraordinary. And then they go away. They're done, they go to the earth, which is a good thing, but still, that's your money going into the earth. The plastic, hopefully, is reused and reused and reused. Hopefully, they're well-built. I believe they have a high level of recycled content. So, I've kind of come to peace with that. And as Patty says, and I appreciate the way their business practice is, is that they take care of their people. And that's why we have an excellent company. And this is a family who I would support wholeheartedly. And if you look at the alternatives to this, we have a company who's come into the area that's actually just going through a 30% rate increase. And that would be Recology, excellent company. But right now, we're working with, with a, you know, an excellent service provider. And so, I feel very confident that our continued work together, and we're working on the ground together, and on task forces together, that we can continue to push the envelope, to make sure that the services are state of the art. This is what they want as well. Sobering fact, it's 2020. Fairfax passed a resolution, before my time on council, saying Fairfax zero waste by 2020. It's not Marin Sanitary's fault. It's not, really, there's no blame to be laid, but it further really reiterates that we have to work together. And right now, to think about a change because of some challenges and some stumbling blocks, to me, doesn't feel wise. So, I'm in support of this contract update and the amendment, and I would entertain a motion.
I'll be happy to make the motion. So I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution establishing maximum rates collected by Marin Sanitary Service for solid waste services to be effective January 1st, 2020, and approving a second amendment to the contract between the Town of Fairfax and Marin Sanitary Services.
Is there a second?
I'd be happy to second that.
Okay, so that's Kohler, motion Kohler, and second Ackerman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so we have, do you get that for the record? Okay, excellent. So, the motion passes. Thank you for your excellent points, Stephanie. Hopefully, it will inform us going forward. And thank you all for coming tonight. Joe, it's great to see you. I hope you'll come back and tell us some great stories sometime. Missed that this year. And we'll move forward. Yeah, take care. Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Oh, we should take a break. So, let's take a seven minute break, if we may. Okay, so we're all set. The next item is to introduce and read by title only, an ordinance incorporating the requirement for a hill area residential development overlay zone permit into the multiple-family residential senior residential zone, town code chapter 17.090, the planned development PDD district, town code chapter 17.112, the upland residential UR7 and UR10 zones, town code chapter 17.124, the single-family residential master plan SFRMP district, town code chapter 17.116, and amending the hill area residential development overlay zone, town code chapter 17.072, exempt from SEQA pursuant to SEQA guidelines, sections 15060, C2, 15061, B3, and 15378. And with that, Ben, do you have a staff report for us?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. This process was initiated some time ago. It arose out of the desire to start to look at increasing the town's use of objective development standards. And your council will recall that we did a very modest change to the planned development district to basically create one of those objective development standards for that district. A little further background, this is in response to the state, basically eliminating anything that isn't an objective development standard. And Janet's more familiar with the definition, but it's basically something that any developer, any person can look at and say, this is what's required. There's no subjectivity to it in interpretation. So, what several council members recognized was that we had a number of zoning districts to which the hillside area, I have to get the exact name, the hill area residential development, also known as HRD overlay zone provisions, would apply. And the benefit of those HRD provisions is they do contain a lot of objective development standards. So, the districts to which the HRD provisions currently apply are protected by those standards and would be applicable for certain types of development, specifically future subdivisions. So, the council directed staff to research that and take it to the planning commission. The planning commission looked at it and in their typical thorough fashion, actually had additional suggestions in terms of additional zoning districts to which this should apply in addition to the planned development district. And they looked at it over three meetings. And the ordinance that you have before you is what they reviewed and are recommending to your council. In summary, the proposed amendments would create additional town residential zoning districts to which the hill area residential development overlay zone would potentially apply. And there's triggers for that applicability. And just briefly, for people who may not understand how an overlay zone works, it's not a specific location that you would have in a conventional zone. For example, in the town, you have commercial districts in the downtown area and residential districts in the residential area. The overlay zone would potentially apply to a variety of zoning districts, and in this case, the HRD provisions already do so. And the recommendation is to apply them to additional zoning districts. And what this does is it creates criteria for review of projects for which the HRD provisions are triggered. So, that's the gist of how that works. And the HRD requirements in this proposed zoning ordinance would apply those HRD requirements to the planned development district, PDD zone, the UR upland residential zones, and that's both UR7, seven acre minimum, and UR10, 10 acre minimum, and the RMS, multiple-family residential senior residential zone. That's kind of an awkward word, but I didn't do it. And so, those all would be now potentially applying HRD requirements if the triggers for using those are met. In terms of the HRD requirements and those triggers, what happens is, in the current zone, both staff and the planning commission recognize that the triggers that are applied there aren't really applicable because they refer to diagrams that don't exist in fact. And I'll get a little bit further into that. But what the HRD modifications would do is update and clarify which maps would apply and be used as a trigger. And it would also clearly show which lots are subject to those HRD provisions. In other words, there's the standard for what work you're doing, and then there's also saying, okay, am I in or am I out? And I'll have additional slides to show the maps that are applying, to show the clarification improvements that we're proposing in this ordinance. The applicability of those HRD provisions would, again, apply objective development standards or odds to hillside lots in all residential zoning districts. So, it would cover off on the entire town. And again, I can't emphasize enough that this is the playbook that the state has left us with. Prior to this recent spate of state legislation, we had a planned development district that worked the way it was supposed. It was a multi-phase process. It had lots of excellent language that protected resources and addressed constraints on the site, things like that. Those weren't termed as objective development standards, so the state has essentially wiped those out. So, we're just taking the playbook that they've given us and making sure that we can still have some local review capability. In terms of which maps we're looking at, applying, the first is the Salem Rice map. And talking to Lyndon Neal, our principal planner, she has been using this informally for some time. And this was a very excellent map that was produced by the same people that worked on the 1973 Town General Plan. This is a more updated document. And what they did was, they took some of the work that they started out doing, and you'll see the map that resulted out of their work in the '73. And they created four landslide hazard zones, basically, one being the most stable and four being the least stable. And that's how they graded them, is one through four. And so, what staff recommended in the commission also, in turn, recommends, is that this map be adopted. And the beauty of this map is, this has been digitized, it's available to zoom in at a lot-specific level. What we've done with that Salem Rice map is actually, with the ability of our very good geographic information consultant, applied town boundaries to that and also overlaid streets. And we didn't show this in the map that you have before you, but we can pop lots into that as an additional layer. So, again, this, if you look at the older general plan map, and I'll get to that in a minute, this is data that was referenced in that general plan, but actually created in a map form subsequent to that map. So, we feel that this is a good assist. And not surprisingly, the areas on this map that are stability zones three and four, which would be the trigger areas for the new provisions, are in the hillside areas. Wait a minute, something jumped past. Oh, God. Well, you know what, I'm gonna have to go off the PowerPoint. I don't know what happened. Something's not coming up in that. The other map, and you have this in your attachments, is Figure S3. And this is areas susceptible to landslides. This is in the current general plan for the town. So, unlike a map which you also have in your packet, this is a digital product. And what's in the general plan was taken from that GIS program. So, it basically has the capability, and what you see in front of you, it has the capability of doing it by lot. And it also can show slope. So, it's got all the benefits of a GIS function. It just doesn't, in the current general plan, the way the figure is used is, it's an aerial that's superimposed over certain data, the same data set. So, the areas that you're seeing in the two shades of tan here, that's attempted to be incorporated into the general plan. Unfortunately, it's not a legible product as it exists in our current general plan. And so, what staff has done is to reconfigure that information, so it now reads legibly, that when you're looking at this document with the two shades of tan, you know that those are triggers for your HRD provisions throughout the town. And again, this pretty much relates to hillside areas. We've also relabeled it in the current general plan. It identifies many landslides. And the challenge with that is that that many landslides layer does not actually exist within the boundaries of the town. And so, what we've had to do is relabel that into multiple landslides, because we researched in the hillside areas, besides the mostly landslides areas, that the areas that are outside the mostly landslide area, but still in hillside areas, have multiple landslides that are documented on various lots. We did a very quick overview of those areas, and that's the light tan area. And so, what we are proposing is to create this category called multiple landslides, to which the HRD provisions would also apply. So, in sum, what you have are two maps, the Salem Rice map, which is up on your screen right now, and I apologize for the PowerPoint. This was all in the PowerPoint. Something weird happened. And this Figure S3, which is an updated version of your current general plan. Between those two maps, they capture all of the information that was created in the suitability for open space map. And a quick discussion about that. In the current HRD provisions, they talk about triggers for applying the HRD provisions. And they refer to two documents. One is Exhibit A, and another is Exhibit Three. And when staff was researching the prior general plan, remember, these references are not from the current general plan, they're from the prior general plan, which is no longer in effect. We could find no such document labels. So, in doing the research, we think that it is this map, and I'll hold it up for our worldwide audience. And this is entitled, "Open Space Element: General Plan Studies: Suitability for Open Space." And this was the very good document that was done at the time by Wallace, McHark, Robertson, Todd, who are one of the first pioneers in the field of land capability analysis via overlays, sort of what GIS systems now do in a digital age. What we've had to do with this map to be able to put a town boundary overlay is what they call geo-reference it as best we can. And what this does is, it takes some of the scale problems that existed in the actual paper map and fixes them to the best we can. You can see, when you're looking at the Fairfax boundaries and what's within the area of Fairfax, it's kind of difficult to tell how that applies on a per-lot basis. And this is unusual, this is something that was created in 1973. And again, it has many, many layers. You can see the various layers, including landslide area, or unstable slopes, rather, excuse me. And so, this is, what staff treats this as is sort of a reference and a source document, and state of the art for 1973, but one which has been supplanted by the more accurate and detailed information that's available in the Salem Rice map and the Figure S3 that's in our current general plan. So, as a somewhat long-winded way of explaining this, what staff's recommendation and what the planning commission recommended, and what is captured in the proposed ordinance before you, is to reference these two updated maps as the triggers for applying HRD provisions. So, in other words, if somebody's lot is in either one of these tan locations in the town, which again, corresponds pretty closely to hillside areas, or in, within the Salem Rice map, in an area labeled lots three or four, or stability zones three or four, the HRD provisions would apply. And one would apply if there was also a certain amount of grading, the other would apply if it's simply located in that zone. So, staff and the commission believe that this provides additional protections and clarity, equally important, for property owners. When people are looking at, gee, do these HRD provisions apply to me or not? It's very difficult to tell based on this map. I mean, it doesn't even show streets. With these maps, it'll be a GIS layer, and it's basically a couple clicks away. Our intention, if your council agrees and adopts this recommended ordinance, is to create a custom Fairfax layer in the county's Marin map service. It's a GIS, publicly accessible GIS site. And with these layers, you could basically go on there and either by entering your assessor's parcel number or your street address, it'll highlight your parcel. Then you can just click on the layer that says Fairfax's landslide stability map, and you would see at a glance, oh, these do apply. So, in terms of a service to the public, it would eliminate a lot of questions about, gee, where's my street? You know, things like that, that doesn't show up in that. Other concluding issues and rationales for the ordinance, as I said, it resolves and eliminates- Other concluding issues and rationales for the ordinance, as I said, it resolves and eliminates the current ambiguities and gaps in the town's regulations. It applies it uniformly to all the residential zoning districts. And again, this gives us protection in situations where currently the state has taken them away, if we do not have objective standards. It also provides a legally defensible reference, these maps, which will be available online, usable by anybody. It will clearly show which lots are subject to the provisions, they're a click away. We're also contemplating a way to try to make this work on the town's website. It probably will be a click-through to the town, to the county's GIS site, but the idea is to make it as user-friendly as possible for people to figure that out. Certainly if somebody doesn't have access to a computer or isn't comfortable working with a GIS program, they could ask staff, and we, you know, it's just a couple clicks away for us. So we're very familiar with that and can provide that information and assistance to people if necessary. It allows the HRD's current objective standards to be applied to all hillside development, above a very minimal level. So, again, protection for the town, the ability to retain what local control the state still affords us. And then I would also conclude by saying it does not affect any current town requirements that pertain to lot frontage, road width, et cetera. I know that this has been raised as a concern in some quarters, that somehow a provision of this would supplant that. When you read the HRD regulations, it doesn't even mention things like streets and lot frontage and things like that. It's looking at how much grading you're doing and things of that nature, or lot slope. The town's current regulations that pertain to items like lot frontage and street width, which are contained in chapter, chapters 12 for the streets and chapter 16 for subdivisions, those would remain intact. So it's not going to weaken those requirements, these requirements are additive to that. So that concludes staff's presentation. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Yes, thank you, Ben. That was excellent. Barbara?
So I have a question about the maps. I understand that these maps will be very useful for understanding the triggering for the hillside residential development. But one question, for example, on Figure S3, which is Attachment E, it has a code for something that should be water, but there's nothing on here that shows water except one little pool area, or maybe that's one of the lakes, but it doesn't show creeks or things like that. But before you answer that question, looking at the old map, which I actually used in the old general plan before we had the new general plan, when I was on the Open Space Committee, and at one point, there was a mixed-use development proposed for what is now Good Earth, way before your time. And one of the things we used to sort of point out the flaws in that proposal was looking, I looked at this map, we had the old maps, and at least I looked at what I thought was this map, maybe it was different. But one of the things we looked at was things that are on this map which are not on your maps. So for example, the visually distinctive areas are not shown on this map, the ridge lines. And there's a variety of things that are in the key for the old map that aren't depicted on new S3, along with S3 really not showing all the water bodies in town. But, but, so my wish would be that I think these maps probably serve our purpose for the hillside residential development, but that we would continue on working with Figure S3. And maybe not everything that's on the old map needs to be depicted. I'm not sure that conifer hardwood areas necessarily need to be depicted, or I'm not sure what, there's a few things I'm not sure what they mean. But I think it would be a good idea to now create another map which has these other elements on it, now that we have this digitized, so it can really be serviceable, because when I was using what I thought was this map back in the old days, many years ago, you know, some of this was guesswork, where things were, which is what you pointed out. So I'm hopeful that that's the direction we're going, to create a map that recreates a lot of these elements, because I think that really is a useful tool. When, I realize those aren't necessarily objective development standards, but visually distinctive areas, we have that language in our code. So let's make sure we don't lose what I believe are important features. And also, S3 is missing water bodies, other than this one patch of blue, which I can't tell where it is. But, you know, we have creeks in town, things like that.
Thank you. And I could say that we are responding along the lines of what you said. To answer your first question, that little pond is the one up at Tamarancho, so it's just outside of town.
Okay.
And you're correct that this is, because it's landslide-focused, it's not really addressing what's going on in creeks. However, when we zoomed in on the Salem Rice map, it actually has what they call a creek stability corridor that captures the two mainstem streams in town. So it's a question of the scale of this map, is you can't really see that. But that was also a concern, because obviously stream banks are among our more, least-stable areas, and so for looking at questions about where you should be building and applying HRD provisions which address those concerns, you want to address stream site areas. Well, this has that running through the stream threads, and it identifies as a stability category four. So it doesn't show on this right.
Okay.
Yeah, but it is captured. To your comment about some of the other items, we are, as we speak, working on taking the ridgeline areas and creating a digitized version that can be applied to a very carefully geo-referenced map. Our intention is to accurately, as accurately as we can, recreate those boundaries, these green boundaries, on a geo-referenced GIS layer for that. And the nice thing about that is even though that's not an HRD area, we do have a ridgeline development chapter, and that will reference that. And to the extent that we need to make some adjustments to that language, we will do so. But I fully anticipate that we will have that map available and online when we get into review of hillside developments that are pending.
Okay, so that answers the question about ridgeline scenic corridors, but it doesn't, and I'm glad that you guys are proceeding with that. And that's, I think, with this focus in mind, from the hillside residential development focus of this ordinance that we're working on tonight. But I don't want to lose some of the important features that are on the old 1973 map, so I would like us to continue on. And I don't know that we need to recreate every element that's on it, but I would very much like us not to lose the integrity of what was done here and get it digitized. So is that something we can continue? I know we're working with the woman from the county on getting all these maps done. Can we continue that so that we do have a map that shows the visually distinctive areas and things like that?
Yes, we can, to the extent that our budget allows. And also, what we're obviously doing now is prioritizing the work, so we know that we need to deal with landslides and hillside areas, you know, as it pertains to HRD. We know we need to deal with ridgelines as it pertains to development on or near ridgelines, so those are the highest priorities. But in terms of taking this other information, which is a lot of work and pretty much state-of-the-art at the time, more than 40 years ago, yeah, we can continue to do that within the town boundaries.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? John?
Yeah, sure. Well, a lot, thank you, Barbara, for, you know, what you were bringing up there. It's similar to a lot of the other things that I was also bringing up. I mean, I think in addition to, you know, having ridgelines, but the ridgeline scenic corridor, which are distinctly different things on this map, as well as the visually distinctive areas, I think those are very useful in that they are referred to in our land use objectives and element policies, which are part of the whereas's of this particular thing in front of us. LU 1.2, limit development on the hillside and ridgeline parcels to preserve and enhance scenic qualities of the town. And then the policy LU 122, which is new and renewed development in visually significant areas shall be designed and cited to have the least visual impact as seen by the majority of the town. And probably it would be good to examine the other chapter that deals, I mean, obviously this hillside overlay is dealing primarily with landslides, but if our objective is to really have objective development standards in place as soon as is rationally possible, and, you know, part of it, you bring up economics, is, you know, dealing, you know, getting this map massaged into the right thing, I think it's really worth our while, because it gives us very, well, it's objective development standards, it gives us something very physical that we can, you know, somebody can just look it up on a map and say, oh, yeah, I get it, this area of this particular slope has a two classification, so it's bedrock showing on the surface, but it's also in a visually distinctive area, and it's part of the ridgeline area, so they can know that right up front, because that's, I think, what the state is looking for. And I think we really need to provide that. So I would also agree with Barbara that a lot of the other information on here, you know, for instance, you know, conifer hardwood, that's kind of forced, it's a catch-all, you know, it's either conifer or hardwood generally, you know, oak madrone being one of the hardwood and conifer being redwoods, which tend not to mix that much. But the scenic highway section is also something there, that I see, you know, gateways, those are probably less useful in terms of our objective development standards. But it would be, you know, as long as we're doing this work on this map, it would really behoove us to, you know, as a legacy going forward, to preserve a lot of that information that was there. And so I would also very much support that. But most importantly, especially as we go through and, you know, to give those tools there in our code and our general, to support our code in our plan here, to take those features of this map, Attachment C, which is the Wallace, the 73-74 map, I'm just trying to describe it for the record here, and incorporate that into the, into the referenceable things such as the Fairfax, yeah, the Rice map. What other comments? I think that's the gist of my comments right now, but there's, yeah, there's also open space policies that are also supported by that, you know, for instance, open space policy OS 322, which is discourage development of any man-made structure in the ridgelines and within the ridge zones within the Fairfax planning area. So that's it for me right now.
Okay. Stephanie or Bruce?
So I concur with Barbara and John's comments, and thank you for your work. That's, mapping can be a pretty slow and painstaking process, but I just have one other thing to add, it's pretty minor, but I'm not sure. On page four of the ordinance, which is, let's see, it's in, at the end of Section 1, I guess is the way you would describe it, anyway, page four, right around the middle, a paragraph that says C at the beginning of it, right before the paragraph that says Section 2 on it, so it's right in the middle of page four. It says, "Access to the property is via a private or public undeveloped roadway and", and then there's a parenthesized note after that. So I'm assuming either that that "and" was something that got in there by accident and we should remove the "and," or I'm hoping that the "and" wasn't preceded by, didn't precede some other phrase that got lost. So I just wanted to call that to your attention and get that corrected.
Yes, thank you. I looked at that, and of course, it's straight out of the existing code, and I think what it really should happen is the "and" should be removed, because that's just an explanatory statement about the fact, you know, what's an unimproved road or undeveloped road, so...
Yeah, that's not actually a change, that's just, that's just part of the code that doesn't change, that's copied here.
Yeah, okay.
I'll say that into the microphone, I can't stop myself from proofreading, so, sorry for everyone.
And I just said, nice catch. I'm, I'll be really quick. I love these maps, I'm going to bring them home and put them on my wall in my office. Just really quick, I just want to make sure that they're dated at the bottom, I think one of them is, so just, I just want to make sure that they're all dated. And then, yeah, I've been tracking this with the planning commission for several months, I don't have any other comments. Thank you. Great work.
So there was talk at the planning commission about the WUW, and that the WUW, this would apply to the WUW regardless of the triggers? Could you explain that to me? Because I didn't see it here, but I didn't know where that landed. So if you've got WUW anywhere, that these triggers don't necessarily apply to, I mean, is the WUW everywhere going to require this overlay?
And WUW is wildland and urban interface.
Yeah.
Which a lot of our town is, is kind of the borders between the town and the wildland.
I would have to do some, a quick scan, but I don't believe that the HRD dives into WUW, that's a more recent term. However, I will say that every project goes through a thorough review by Ross Valley Fire. So if planning looks at that project, it gets routed to fire, and if it meets a certain threshold, they have to do a vegetation management plan. So independent of any town code requirements pursuant to vegetation management and fire safety and things like that, the Ross Valley Fire has a pretty good handle on that. And furthermore, if we get into major projects, and for example, environmental review, then there would be a very deep dive into all of the vegetation management, forestry management, fire improvements, you know, those type of things. So it may not be contained, I don't believe it is, in the HRD provisions, but there's lots of language, including other agencies' requirements that address that.
Okay, and then real quickly, back to page four, C as the triggers, and that same, same section that Bruce just brought up about the roads. So I just need a little more of an explanation about, so if this is one of the triggers, can you explain how that, how that fits there?
Yeah.
I know it's not being changed from what's in the code as it is, but I just want to understand that.
This is a nice provision, because what it says is if you've got a parcel that's not currently served by a roadway and one must be extended, that you're automatically through this process, because when you think about it, if you often extend a road in a hillside area, you're doing a lot of grading. And so when you go through the objective standards here, you definitely would want to be looking at what the impacts of that grading are. So that's what, all this says is that if you've got a project that requires this, you're into HRD regardless of whether you're doing X amount of grading, or you're in a stability zone or something like that. It's simply saying, you extend a street, we're going to be looking at you on an HRD basis.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to go out to the public and...
Mayor, it's a public hearing.
Right, I was just going to say that. I was looking to make sure. So since it's a public hearing, I'd like to open the public hearing, so Frank.
Thank you, Mayor. Frank Egger speaking for Save Fairfax on this issue. Barbara's memory is pretty good here. There are actually eight of those maps, and the Town Council needs to see all eight of them. The, the open space element maps that were prepared by Wallace, McCard, Robertson, Todd in, for the 1974 Open Space Settlement for the General Plan. I hired Wallace, McCard, Robertson, Todd in 1973, and they, they completed eight maps for us. And you have one or two, you only have one before you. You need to see all eight. So, so hopefully you'll be able to see all eight sometime here in the very near future, especially with these developments coming forward. Specifically, the Roberts, the Wallace, McCard, Robertson, Todd map I'm referring to is different than the one you have, and it's the map that, that is about landslide abundance. And it was prepared after they used state geologist Ted Smith's field notes, where he, where he noted every landslide and every street. He lived in Fairfax for one year and mapped every street in town, and, and he, he, he had a geologist, another geologist with him, and they identified all the landslides at Fairfax. Then we had a Mylar of every lot, of the town limits and every lot, and we took the Mylar and laid it over the maps. And you could see exactly what lot fell or what parcel fell in a landslide zone or didn't. I don't know where that Mylar is. I don't think you use it anymore. I, I'm asking you to, to, to drop Upland Residential and PDD zones from this ordinance tonight. And the reason is, there's only a few properties that it affects. Upland Residential, there's the two nine-icre lots behind Victory Village and, and the Wall property. Back in, back in the early 70s, we, we had a problem with, with developers accessing and dividing property using a private road to get to those properties. So we passed a private road ordinance as, as a, as a means to allow Fairfax to reject the development and reject a private road accessing that development. We wanted all developments to be accessed by a public street where we could get proper services, police and fire services into them. The, you, you don't have a list of properties that are affected, but, but Upland Residential 10, I believe, the Wall property is the only one that's Upland Residential 10. So specifically, you're addressing something about the Wall property tonight. And the other Upland Resident, Upland Residential 7 is, is the two lots above Victory Village, and maybe one more parcel. What's going to happen is this ordinance through C that Bruce brought up, it recognizes a private road as a means to access the development. And basically, what this is going to do is aid in, in developing those properties. Since one is going through an EIR press process very soon, you should not be amending the ordinance until you've gone through this EIR process with the, with the Wall property. Fairfax has plenty, plenty of options in order to protect that land without, without this Upland Residential Zone, without Upland Residential being included in, in the hillside area overlay zone. As far as PDD, it's, it's a Meadowland, it's, it's Cannaville, it's St. Rides. All the densities were set on those properties by ordinance. St. Rides got 70 units. That's the Bennett House. Cannaville's got 109 units. Meadowland got 52 units. And that was in exchange for, for certain open space parcels or certain properties not being developed. Now, when you throw in this ordinance, and you threw this ordinance as an overlay on top of the PDD, they're all built out, but you're going to, by opening them up, somebody's going to try to develop the open space in, in those PDD zones. I think it's pretty simple, just to eliminate PDD and Upland Residential tonight from, from this, from this introduction. And, and, and we'll, we'll save ourselves a lot of grief, but for sure, get all eight of those WMRT maps, WMRT maps that the town has. They were in a safe last I saw them, and you do have one tonight, so get the other seven. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker, please. Chris.
Council members, staff and citizens, I'm Chris Lang. Frank predates me by 10 years on that. When I first bought my little house on Ridge Road, the house next door to it completely filled the lot side to side and virtually all the way up and down. A lady across the street, Carol Lee Keller, said, "This can't stand. We can't let the town of Fairfax approve these kind of developments." And I agreed with her. So we circulated a petition, just walking around, got 500 signatures, and petitioned the Fairfax Town Council at the time, it was a bunch of older, big guys in suits with white hair. And I came in looking like a hippie and said, "We want a building moratorium for six months in order for Fairfax to tighten up its building regulations." So the hillside residential development permit process grew out of that effort. We also tried to get a riparian protection corridor of 50 feet on each side proposed, but there was too much pushback from property owners on that. But the HRD went forward, and we used it as a litmus test for Town Council candidates such as Carol Sherman. If you wanted to be on Town Council, what do you approve of these regulations? Was it yes or no? So the original intent of the regulation was to ensure geotechnical stability in terms of engineered foundations going down to bedrocks so the houses wouldn't slide off the hill because of the houses getting built on stilts over here, it wasn't cool. And then it became also floor area ratio and lot coverage, and those were really important, basic features of the original process. Later on, it went, and I think Frank gets credit for height limits and things like that. But the reason I'm talking to you now is because the HRD process has become onerous. My house on Canyon Road, which is a stone's throw from a dead flat road, is in now is in the HRD zone. Therefore, I need a use permit to build a storage shed on my deck. No new footprint, no nothing. I need a use permit. As an ex-planning commissioner, I always thought use permits were reserved for commercial businesses that were, had to regulate hours and type of activity and parking, et cetera, et cetera. But to require a use permit and a consequent notification of this huge list of people and all the fees is onerous, in my opinion, that the HRD permit, and I appreciate Planning Director Burdo's work to comply with the state regulations, I think it's completely reasonable. I can't speak to the PDD issue Frank raised, but I think it's reasonable to extend the zone all over and update the standards. But I think that right now, the process is overzealous. It's, puts too many properties into the HRD zone, and if they are HRD, you shouldn't have to get a use permit to build a shed on your deck. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Any other speakers? Chance. Hi.
Hi, good evening. Yeah, so first I wanted to, by the way, my name's Chance Cotronno. I wanted to thank Councilmember Kohler for her sentiments about the maps. It's unfortunate that the folks in the crowd could not see the maps. It would have been good to just press like Escape and just have the like raw PowerPoint up so we could have seen it. It wouldn't even do it, darn. Well, the, either way, those maps are really helpful, and to your point, Councilmember Kohler, I thought that, you know, I, I serve on the Open Space Committee, I'm here speaking for myself, but I, on the Open Space Committee, we do really appreciate to have that information. And I know we recently had a new appointment to the Open Space Committee and took that person out for coffee, and we were talking about getting a better sense of some of the history of the open space. And without those resources on maps, it makes it much more difficult to convey the view shed, the ridge lines, the streams. Those are all considerations when we're trying to figure out how to advise council on open space issues. To the points that Frank made, I have unfortunate, like, I would say unfortunately, but maybe it's not unfortunately, spent much, like, way too much time looking into all of these chapters as they relate to this issue since the last meeting, because I was really trying to figure out where the confusion was. I, I do see that what Frank is saying about Chapter 12, which is the private road establishment codes, there is a second subsection, which is subsection B, which talks about the fact that any private road establishment procedures are actually not looked at if there is subdivision map or if it's going through this major or minor subdivision plan. And so that's one of the ways that, that private roads establishment piece, it's kind of moot if there's a, if someone, if a private landowner plans a subdivision, at least that's my understanding, and maybe Ben could clarify that for me. But from reading that whole piece, the way that I understand it is, if there was a subdivision proposal, ultimately it would take place under the process laid out under Chapter 16 and not under Chapter 12, the, the private roads piece of it. And so, again, maybe Ben could clarify for me, if it's under Chapter 16, which is going through this whole process of map making and map presenting, that provides a really long runway for understanding not only the, the completeness of the plan that's produced, that's provided to the Planning Commission and the tentative map and, and the approval of that tentative map, but there are multiple more steps. It going to council, it going back to the Planning Commission for the final map, the approve, before the HRD overlay would even come into play. Is that correct? Or does the HRD overlay come into play at a, at a closer date? I guess I'm just trying to get a sense of like, how much oversight is there between somebody submitting a plan and that HRD overlay coming into effect? Or does it streamline this process? Or does it, I understand the objective standards that it places on any planning process, but just trying to get clarification on the timeline for when this comes into play.
Okay, Chance, that three minutes is definitely up, but let's ask for...
I would suggest you just wait for all the public comments, and then he can answer.
Oh, is there any other public comment? Oh, there is. Okay, so we've got the question, Chance, and we'll come back to it. Okay, next.
I'll be brief because I've said this a few times before. So I hear very clear statements from Planning Director about making things tougher, back against the wall, state things, subjective standards, it all seems really sensible and logical. I hear Frank again say, things are getting, going to get, it's going to be easier for developers, and like, I'm not this sophisticated, I don't read our ordinances to that level. I struggle with the same thing every time, which is I'm just trying to understand, are we protecting ourselves more? Is it going to be harder for development? Or are we opening something up and it's going to be easier for development? I really would love to get some clarity around that. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Richard. Next, next speaker, please.
Mark Bell, Fairfax. In looking at the title here for this number seven tonight, it says, "Introduce and Read By Title Only in Ordinance." So Frank has brought up that you don't have all the information that you need. So my hope, and I would assume the hope of many people who live in Fairfax, would be that you don't make a decision without all the facts that you need. And as far as the other thing that Frank said, I'm in agreement with that. And as far as doing the, getting more money for CIS, it's really simple. There's $460,000 that doesn't need to be wasted on a bridge that's not needed on Meadowway.
Okay, so is that the last public comment? If so, I will close the public hearing and ask if you would address Mr. Cotronno's questions. And I would say that even prior to that, we're all grappling with this. And I do know how much hard work staff has done and how deeply they have dug into this. So let's see if we can get some clarity.
So in our subdivision regulations, Section 1624040B, it talks about width. Streets and alleys shall be provided with a minimum width of 20 feet or greater. This is public streets. But elsewhere in our codes, in the zoning regulations, it requires frontage on a public street for every parcel, for every new parcel, and it specifies minimum widths, typically 65 feet or something like that, it varies. So again, what I said earlier about HR being additive, H, the HRD provisions do not eliminate that requirement. What it does is it says, we're looking at how you're doing your grading, for example, and making sure that you don't have too steep a slope and things of that nature. In terms of how that would apply is if somebody were to come in for a straight subdivision map, we would say you're putting in new roadways and that they have to meet these standards, that you have to have, each lot has to front on a public street. And that furthermore, these HRD provisions would also say, when you're doing your grading, you need to pay attention to what these objective standards and HRD requirements require. So it's not weakening our provisions. HRD isn't about lot frontage or public versus private. It does mention it, but it only mentions it so far as to say, if you're putting in a private or public road, it triggers HRD requirements. So that's as clear as I can make it, is that it's not weakening, in staff's opinion, in the opinion of the attorney. I can understand how a certain interpretation might raise that question, but I would just simply say that a, a straight-faced evaluation of where in the town there are requirements and regulations that apply to lot frontage and what you have to do in terms of roadways, those are in other chapters, and they're not, that hasn't changed. The reality is that people can have private roads, and in certain instances, they will, but their parcel still, it's essentially a driveway. Their parcel still have to front on a public street, and that street has to be built to public streets, it standards, and HRD doesn't change that.
Okay, thank you for that. Bringing it back up here, any, who would like to start?
Well, I, I concur with what you say. I'd say the only comment I'll, I'll make is that same paragraph that I suggested the "and" to be taken out of. It is, that paragraph is part of the triggers, what triggers the HRD. And it's saying that the HRD is triggered, as, as you described in your report. One of the reasons it could be triggered is if the access to the property would be on a roadway that is undeveloped. And it happens to say public or private, just to make that a totally inclusive statement. Any roadway that's undeveloped, if that's the roadway you're depending on as access to the property, and we already have in our ordinances that you have to have a roadway accessing a property, you can't have a property that's landlocked. If, then that triggers the HRD, which is what we want. We want the HRD to be triggered in the, in the maximum number of, of conditions, that it, all the conditions it needs to be. So you described that, and the fact that it says public or private, and elsewhere in ordinances, it's, it may say, we don't, I'm not positive of this, but this is what I'm hearing tonight, elsewhere in our ordinances, it says, it can't be private. Well, okay, that's, that doesn't, that doesn't weaken or confuse anything. If we ever changed any other ordinance, it would still say public or private here, but it's just being as inclusive as possible as to what triggers the HRD ordinance, which I think is what we want. So I think, I don't think it's an issue. So, yeah, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Bruce. Next. Anyone over here? Nothing? John, do you have comments?
Yeah, I'd like to, I mean, speaking to the, you know, eliminating certain zones from here, I, I just kind of wanted to drill into that, just to see if there's any benefit in your opinion at all. To me, yeah, I don't see the benefit of that because we're relying on agreements made in the 70s that we don't necessarily have any records of. Is that correct? Have you seen those?
I'm not, I'm not questioning the history and the rationales behind requiring public roads, and as I said, those are, in my opinion... And as I said, those are, in my opinion, clearly on the books. In terms of eliminating it, I would take the opposite position. Insofar as the state has so drastically weakened our local ability to review projects and what local review we may retain, and I use that word "may" very specifically because if you look at our PDD provisions, I mean, like I said, they were great until the latest state modifications. And they wiped them out. And they just said, no, it's gotta be what we see in our HRD where it talks about it, no more than a one, one-to-one slope on cuts and things like that. That's an objective standard. Any developer could know that. So if we don't apply it to some of our remaining undeveloped parcels, we're left with very little in terms of local review and the ability to craft project reviews and approval that meet town standards. And I, we have additional work coming up. This is something on objective standards. This is something that the majority of jurisdictions in Marin are collaborating on with a consultant. And what our goal is, again, is to establish as many objective standards as we can that are crafted to fit each jurisdiction so that we do retain that, that very critical local review ability. So I, we could, we could take UR, the UR zone properties out and we could take out the PDD zone properties. And my question would be, what does that leave us in terms of ability to guide and govern regulation? And I would argue it's, it's next to nothing. So I'm on the other side of the issue there.
Yeah. I, I'm not necessarily arguing. I, I tend to agree with you. I mean, I think, especially given this current climate of SB, the state law, you know, SB 35 is one of them, you know, requiring objective development standards, I tend to agree. And, which is why I was earlier arguing for, you know, these maps to be, contain that additional information, which would be useful down the road as we deal with some of these other questions as they come up. You know, I, I think that's very important at this time and I would, I'd like to support that.
So no, oh, Garrett, did you have something?
So maybe a little clarification in terms of the history. The council may recall, this issue came up when we were talking about PDD probably two years ago. And at that time, a couple of council members said, huh, does HRD apply to PDD? And we said, no, it's your exception. Our understanding was, a lot of the information required for HRD was already incorporated into PDD, so really it wasn't needed. But the council indicated, well, no, we should go ahead and make that requirement. And with most things, nothing is ever that simple when it comes to zoning. And as the planning commission delved into it, they said, hmm, well, it should maybe also apply to UR zones and we should have objective development standards. And so, so we're coming back to you with that. But the thing to keep in mind is, as one of the speakers said, oddly, anytime we require additional permitting, I'm not saying it makes it easier or harder, it does require one more step for an applicant to go through, if that can answer that question. So that's kind of the bigger picture. You have the standards, Hope Purpose was added to PDD, and you're adding it to UR. If you said, don't add it to those, pretty much we have the same thing, other than we have more clear maps and objective development standards. So just kind of keep that in mind. It's always an extra permitting requirement that you can decide whether that's a good thing or a bad thing.
Okay. Thank you, Garrett. And my comment is only that I, after digging around and really trying to study this as deeply as I can and consulting when conferring with some people I, I trust who I know who've also looked into this, I cannot see how this would be, would be anything but strengthening our, our ability to protect ourselves to the extent that we are able to do that anymore. So I feel very confident and very grateful for staff's work on this and for starting the process in the maps. I get that we can make them much better as technology changes and put some money toward it, but I'm very comfortable with it. I, I wish that I could understand how you think it would be lessening because our, our goal is not to make ourselves more vulnerable and less protected. So I feel as though we've done the diligence. So would anyone like to make a motion on this item?
Well, I'd make a motion to introduce and read by title only and ordinance incorporating the requirement for a Hill area residential development overlay zone permit into the multiple-family residential, senior residential zone, town code chapter 17.090. The planned development district, PDD district, rather, planned development, yeah, town code chapter 17.112. The Upland residential UR 7 and UR 10 zones, town code chapter 17.124. The single-family residential master plan, SFRMP district, which is town code chapter 17.116. And amending the Hill area residential development overlay zone, town code chapter 17.072, exempt from SEQA, SEQA guideline sections 15060C2, 15061B3, and 15378.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, but with the change of removing that word "and," sorry.
Okay.
The change of removing that word "and" that we...
Yes. I mean, I, can I also encourage further development of the map with that motion?
We're working on it.
We're doing it anyway.
Yep. We appreciate that.
Okay. So we have a motion, Reed, and a second Ackerman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So seeing none opposed, the motion passes. And we're moving on. This is item number eight.
Mayor, we've, we were supposed to review the agenda at 10:00 PM, so we might want to do something.
Wow. Got late.
Since it's a little later.
So reviewing the agenda, I think we only have this next item and then one more.
Yeah, I think it's short. I think we can do it.
I think we can do it, but thank you for reminding me of that. And I'm going to, as I'm recused from this item, I'm going to go and make myself a fried egg in the kitchen and I'll come back for the final item. Okay.
And Chance, I just want to mention to you, those of us on the open space committee many years ago created an open space map and we each got small copies of it. You guys have that? Okay. I mean, it's not the maps that we were talking about, but that's a helpful map. Okay, great. Thank you.
Garrett, are we talking about Cascade?
Yes. Unless you wanted to change the order.
I think we should do Cascade first.
Huh? Go on, with number eight. Okay. So the next agenda item, which council member Goddard recused herself from because she lives on Cascade, is to discuss and consider the report on, from the Cascade Working Group regarding the Cascade Drive striping project. So Garrett, could you give a report?
Sure. Give you a little background. As you know, back at your December 4 meeting, the council received a report from staff and the transportation, in traffic engineer, Prezi Transportation regarding the traffic calming project on Cascade. At that time, you also received the comments from the neighborhood meeting on November 21st, different options to consider. You continued that matter to your December 18 meeting. And at that meeting, you talked about the project again. You received a report from staff on the improvements that we believe the council authorized, adjustments to the project. At that meeting, as you indicated, Mayor, Mayor Goddard recused herself due to a potential conflict and they appointed Councilmember Hellman to replace her as part of the group with Councilmember Reed. Councilmembers Hellman, Reed did co-facilitate a neighborhood meeting on Saturday, December 21st, first year in the women's club. 21 residents plus two traffic engineers signed in and we've created a working group of emails based on that. Based on that, one of the points, things, Councilmember Reed did clarify that he misspoke at the December 18 council meeting regarding the issue of a fatality that occurred in Dead Man's Curve. The police chief was at the meeting, indicated that police records over the last 20 years, even anecdotally, they don't, didn't reflect any fatality. Also at the meeting, the traffic engineers kind of summarized the changes to the project based on council direction. One was install of curve warning signs at the appropriate, appropriate locations with advisory speeds, in this case, say 15 miles per hour. Remove the 25 mile per hour pavement markings, replace with 15 mile per hour pavement markings. Move any signs that may be unnecessary, add new pedestrian bicycle signs, bicycle signs, and reduce the regulatory speed in the area if justified via a speed survey. Traffic engineer did conduct a speed survey to, to support that, and that's something the council indicated they would support. So we would do a regulatory decrease to 15 in that area. At the meeting, town staff indicated we did paint some curbs red. Since that time, we've also added some additional no parking markings on the pavement. Should be noted, clarification, that the council did not approve us to add a yellow line back in, in the curved areas, nor to, there's fog lines in the area, in order to move the fog lines all to one side, so we're not doing that. At the end of the traffic engineer's presentation at that Saturday meeting, the residents asked questions, they offered their comments. The staff report provides a more detailed comment list of what the general comments were. But in general, obviously, some residents disapproved of the project, discontent the project, would like it restored. Others shared liability, safety concerns. Others thought it had a traffic calming effect. They thought they felt safer, but it should be monitored. Others thought about some improvements, maybe some education materials. Others asked for some traffic enforcement in the area related to stop signs and so on. So during the meeting, the traffic engineers did talk about one improvement that we didn't necessarily talk to the council about was adjustment to the fog line. That's the white line that's around the curved areas. And they talked about reducing it from four feet to three feet with it being phased in along the curves. So in some cases, maybe it doesn't move or it moves a few inches in, but ultimately the four-foot areas would be reduced down to three feet. Traffic engineer is fairly adamant about that. And what we've done is actually since that time and since the staff report, we do have an estimate for the cost of those improvements. It's about $8,200 to do all that work, including grinding the fog line as recommended by the engineer. The contractor has also indicated they can begin that work next week if they give them the go-ahead. We just received that information today. At the meeting, subsequent to the meeting, the council members also indicated that, Councilmembers Hellman, Reed also indicated that we're tentatively proposing Saturday, February 1, 10 to 12, as another meeting of the Cascade Working Group. We're also working with the traffic engineer on educational flyer. One of the other things that we're just working on now is we're trying to create online a signup sheet so that Cascade Working Group, they can actually, will sign, other people can sign up to get information on that group and they can just do it electronically. It'd be part of constant contact when the information goes out. It would just kind of go out the same way individually, so we wouldn't do group emails per se. And with that, I believe Councilmembers Hellman, Reed would probably like to provide the council with a verbal report of the meeting. And then one thing in terms of cost, why we're at it is, a traffic engineer indicated that most of the costs were covered with state ride to school program. We estimated about $2,000 of costs for the traffic engineer were not covered. All the $10,000 that I think some members of the public refer to, that's actually payment to Prezi Transportation for a different project. That project being the Class 1 bike lane on Sir Francis Street. That was what we completed, the connect city to Lefty Gomez. That was for design, construction management of that project, so that's a completely different project. So with that, I guess I'll turn it over to the council subcommittee.
If, if I can just quickly clarify two things. One, you, just to, I'm not sure I heard right, you said the contractor did say that they could start probably next week if we approved that work.
Yes.
On the grinding.
Right. That's correct.
We already approved that work.
Yeah. So we can do the work, but they could start as soon as next week.
So that was my other question, was are you asking us at this time on this council to consider whether to do the fog line movement or is that already decided?
Well, that's, that's what we decided. But I will say, if on the odd chance, all four of you or majority of you said something to the effect of, don't do it, then I guess I would come back to you for action in February.
Yeah, I mean, we can have discussions. So let's just, let's just clarify what's in scope for the $8,000, just so Bruce and the public can understand. So we agreed the fog lines would be reduced from four feet to three feet. You're gonna re-grind some areas that are exposing the yellow line right now, right? And then we're reducing the, the speed limit from 25 to 15, right? Are those the...
And grinding out the 25 on the road.
Right. So we, we grind out the 25 in the road, replace it with 15, add 15 signs, add signs along the curves of 15 miles per hour, probably reduce, take out some signs that are unnecessary like children playing. We might have, I forget what's on the plans.
Some signage.
But some other signage related to when you come into the area, two-way traffic, some of the other type of signs. So it's a full...
Yeah. The obvious sign that I would suggest is road narrows. I mean, that didn't come up at that, but I think that people are used to, they know what road narrows means. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Go ahead.
And I, I think it's everything that the council previously approved, but we're letting council know that it was also the fog line we're gonna adjust. That's probably the major, the major probably addition to what you previously approved.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So on page two of the staff report, it talks about that the changes included installing curve warning signs, remove 25 pavement marking, remove signs that may be unnecessary, et cetera. So that meeting was held on December 18th. Is there some reason why here we are, January 15th, and we haven't done? I mean, I get the thing about moving the fog line, but can't we do some of this other stuff? I mean, one of the things we talked about at the council was, you know, the process wasn't great, but what can we do to make it better for people and not take a long time doing it? So a month has passed since December 18th. Why couldn't we have done some of these things in that month?
Contract, well, in essence, we were waiting for the neighborhood meeting on the 21st. Contractor wasn't available due to the holidays. It wasn't anything staff could really do. And we also need to talk about the fog line. So I think in the big picture of things, we're really to start next week, it's just a matter of timing. If the holidays weren't around, obviously, things could have happened much quicker.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So a couple of things I wanted to raise, and then John, feel free and the rest. I'd like to establish, once we have a date from the contractor, what our measurement period is gonna be. So is that 60 days, 90 days? Because I don't think any of us want this to go on for six or nine months. I think we really need to move on as a community and resolve this. So that's my first question. What Prezi has recommended in terms of a measurement period, is it 60? I hope it doesn't exceed 90 days personally, but, and that, my assumption is that it would, the start date would be effective when these changes go in. And I'm hearing that that's next week.
That, that's correct.
So I've been doing, I've been doing some research throughout the county on my own, driving around, a similar situation, trying to understand, you know, the width of, comparing the width of our road and similar scenarios throughout the county. And ours is a very, obviously, a very narrow road. And I'm trying to understand this recommendation of having these, these fog lanes, honestly. And so the, you know, the comments and the complaints and the unofficial accidents that are not being documented because they're just being phoned into the police department are coming in. And... are coming in, and it terrifies me that we're going to have a head-on collision. I'm just going to say that because I've heard numerous residents say they've seen potential head-ons, and we have a list that Garrett is going to load to the town website of, you know, accidents called in and complaints and so forth. So I'm personally very concerned about where this, where we are with the, with the projects. I think the good news is we've established a regulatory, if you want to call it, change to 15 miles per hour, that we can substantiate that as a permanent change, no matter what happens. And I think both sides, if you will, are relatively pleased with that change. And I, and as I understand it, Garrett, will you confirm this? Parisi says that we can, it is a potential solution to go back to the yellow line with the 15 miles per hour. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, because there was some question about that, and I just want to confirm for the public that that is a potential solution for us to consider. Okay, I think I'm done for now.
Okay. And I've had some other thoughts along just seeing, you know, what altercations people have, especially with it. It was useful to see what was phoned into the police department and just the types of confrontations that come up. And, you know, basically, we have changed conditions there, and people are unsure of exactly how to interpret those changes. And one thing that immediately comes to mind is somebody who correctly, you know, encountered a truck coming the other way, moved their motor vehicle over into the fog line zone, which was entirely legal and appropriate, and then there was a pedestrian who was standing on the line saying, "You're driving on the sidewalk." And I think that that, right there, indicates that we need to do some education in terms of the fact that, you know, all of these zones need to be shared in a safe manner so that all users of the road are, you know, can use it safely. You know, a lot of the other comments that I've seen is like, oh, you know, there, people are driving more slowly, they are wary of, of the, you know, the potential for conflicts between different users, and they're slowing down, which is really what, the lowered speed is what's making it safer, I think. But we also, you know, I mean, it's a change, and people are having to adapt their behavior to it, and so that takes some time. I mean, you're concerned bringing up 60 days, I don't know that 60 days is really a long enough period to let things settled out and have, have it be like, oh, can we live with this, or do we have to do some tweaks, or do we, you know, scrub the lines out, or whatever we decide at that point? I'm not sure that 60 days is really long enough, but.
Well, if you're talking about the center line, it would be, the omission of the center line would be 60 days plus however many days it's been since implementation, right? Which was the day after the election, so.
Yeah, but I'm just back here for a bit because we should actually hear public comment before we get into the discussion.
Oh, okay.
We should be asking questions.
My apologies.
Yeah, that is, that is true. I mean, this is kind of clarifications at this point.
So I'll open this up to public comment on this.
Thanks, Bruce.
As I said last time, I don't have a strong, clear thing. There's been some pros and cons to both sides of it, but one thing that I would just want to mention is that, and I don't go past Laurel, because I live off of Laurel, so I don't know what's happening on the other side, but as you approach the stop sign at Laurel and that area there where it's curved, multiple times, I drive every day, it's my way in and out home. Many vehicles are extending beyond those white lines, and it's getting really odd. And keep in mind that, you know, there's a lot of UPS and FedEx and delivery stuff, so there's often a truck that's double parked. We have a lot of pickup trucks with lots of services and kind of workman-type things that happen all around town, so there's often things there, but it's definitely gotten very precarious now as I see cars that are either parked where they're, like, the driver's side door is already, you know, they're a little bit over the white line, or where there's literally like a long pickup truck, and it's just the back of it's sticking over, and it's just exacerbating the situation, so.
Chris Lane Canyon Road. So I submitted a list of recommendations for the stretch of road in question to make it more of a bicycle boulevard, mostly about signage and individual details about where the 15 mile per hour would go. Basic idea was to wipe out the 25 going uphill, put a 20 in there, because it's 25 down below, so people realize they have to slow down, and then putting 15 after the stop sign on both roads, Laurel and Cascade. So we're trying to get people to slow down, not to suddenly say, "You have to go 15 here." That was one idea. The other idea was about the signage, the share of the road signage, which I think can be applied regardless of where the fog line is or the, whatever, double yellow line. You could always just put in a dashed yellow line. I mean, then it would be legal to pass people, but I think the project is working as planned. You know, we live in a pretty car-centric area. Like I say, I have to drive every day, too. Not my choice. But I haven't actually seen any scofflaw parking. I haven't actually seen people's cars sticking out onto the pavement, because those people mostly live there, and so occasionally a visitor will transgress, but I feel like mostly the situation's under control. As far as cars almost hitting each other head-on, that's a problem. But I think slowing everything down and putting some uncertainty into the equation actually benefits us walkers and bike riders and people that want to not have to live on a racetrack, because Cascade Drive is dangerous there. It is kind of a racetrack, and I think you should take your cue mostly from the people that live there rather than the people that drive there every single day, because the whole point of it is to, the Fairfax Non-Motorized Transportation Encouragement Program, our latest little brainchild, is to get people out of their cars. So I think the project serves as a very vital experiment. I'm concerned about the original cost. My understanding was the cost was all paid by safer routes to schools. If there's another $8,000 to be spent, I'm just a little leery about us spending that much money on it without waiting long enough to see if the situation will settle down, so I'm basically agreeing with Councilmember Reed that we need to wait a little bit longer before taking any action at all, frankly. Even though the traffic engineer recommended, you approved it, it's going to get done. It's, I don't think it's going to make much difference, frankly. But the 15 mile per hour stuff, that's the key, right there. And then if you put a, wipe out the fog line and put a dashed yellow line in there and get traffic to slow down, great. But I don't think that the minor changes you propose will make that much difference. So I'm hoping that we'll have some more time for the car drivers who are dominating the street and speeding faster than conditions are safe and endangering bicycles and pedestrians will just calm down. Thank you.
Chris Kenton, Cascade. The first thing I wanted to say is that my understanding is that there is no local discretion for setting the speed limit or changing the speed limit. It's based on the prevailing speed, the 85th percentile of the prevailing speed. When there was a traffic study that we were exposed to back in 2003, when we were first trying to do traffic calming measures, we, the kibosh was put on any recommendations for changing speeds, for any discussion about any other type of traffic controls, because the prevailing speed at the time was 22. something like eight miles per hour. So when Parisi said that there is a rationale for lowering the speed limit to 15, it was based on the traffic study that was done after these changes were made. So if we roll this all back in 60 days, that rationale goes away. We're back to 22.8 mile per hour prevailing speed, and so we don't have any control in changing that speed again. So I just want to point out, and you can verify it with Parisi and with the town attorney, but if we, if the goal is to lower the speed, then the changes that had been made are giving us the ability to do that. So that's the first thing I wanted to point out.
Well, I've never seen that data. So does anyone have that study?
Well, we have a study now that says 15, so.
Well, I've never seen the 2003 one.
No, no, we don't, we can't find that one.
I think it's county.
Yeah, we, we don't have anything that far back.
Okay, well, it doesn't exist until it's been provided, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, well, that's fine, but you just need to understand that right now, we have a rationale and a study that says that we can lower the speed limit to 15, and that's based on what we have in place now. So when that goes, that rationale goes, and another traffic study has to be done, and, you know, I mean, you, you can presume that the speed's going to go back up when you get the center line back in, because people get in their lane and they go. So the, the other thing I wanted to point out about the complaints that have been called in, nine of those complaints were about parking out of the 15. One of those complaints wasn't anywhere near it, was in the 500 block. One of those complaints, as you pointed out, was due to somebody erroneously thinking that because they were on that line, that they owned that space. So some of this is coming from confusion, some of this is coming from the chaos from changes being made. I think if you talk to the Mill Valley Police Department with regard to the changes that they made, if you talk to the twin, I'm sorry, the Central Marin Police Department about the changes that were made on Francisco, you'll find that there were probably also a bulb of complaints that happened when they put those in place, because there is that period, and that's why we have that period for change. So from my perspective, I definitely see people slowing down. I still see people who are, you know, quite, you know, honestly dedicated jerks, who will go right into that line, and they will go 25, they don't care if anyone's coming. I saw that happen with a white pickup truck this evening, where they don't care what's going on, they see that spot, they're going to hit the gas and they're going to go. So that's something that we have to deal with, that's just an attitude. And the structural changes to the road aren't going to change that, enforcement's not going to change that, it's attitude, and that's something that we're going to have to unfortunately deal with. Thank you.
How's it going? Matt Query, Cascade as well, too. I actually live where the sidewalk ends and the road narrows, so those two signs are right by me. I appreciate everyone's work across the board and all the comments so far, and all the hard work's been done to try to do something. It's fully in support of 15 miles per hour. I've seen people start to slow down, but I've also seen speed start to pick up again. Now that people are used to it, they're getting used to it and just flying around. So, you know, definitely, there, there have been so many unreported accidents even before this. We're now hyper-aware of this stuff now because things have changed, but there's a ton of accidents on Cascade that never get reported. There's cars been hit right outside my front where I've helped people drive their car back down Cascade, because they sideswiped on their car to even see it in the road narrows part. So whatever this council can do to keep it to 15 and really test this out for a while, I think is in the best interest of everybody. Give it some time, and I think if, like Chris and Chris said, agree with both, but really, if we pull away this stuff, we're not going to have the chance to keep that 15. I think it's really important to try to get the mentality to change here. That's it. Thanks.
Deborah Benson, Cascade Drive. I think that if people are slowing down because they're terrified of being hit by an oncoming car, that's not a great reason to, to change the circumstance. I, for one, am terrified every time I drive up there at night, not knowing whether I'm going to, I'm going to be hit head-on. I've had an incident of road rage. I've had an incident of nearly hitting a pedestrian who was walking in the dark in this silly little space that no one would ever have been walking in before on the right when you get to, to Laurel. So I met with a neighbor who was kind enough to go out with a tape measure and at every mailbox measured the distance from the curb to the fog line. And 22, 22 measurements. There were 16 feet, 16 and a half, 17 and a half, the widest was 19 and a half. And I have a safety criteria from the Federal Highway Administration for local rural and urban road widths, lane widths, from nine to 12 feet. So none of these, even if we take the fog line back a foot, falls within those safety standards. And I, I firmly believe that we should return Cascade Drive to its original condition, put the stripe back, take away the fog lines, and give us back our safe road. This is just, in no way, no matter what else you do, is this safe. And I, I think it's, I mean, there are people here in town who are coming up and saying that their roads need to be fixed, they've been asking for years, you know, there are potholes, and so far, 20,000, 22,000, another 8,000, $30,000 on this project that I think is a travesty is a shame and a sin. And I have a question also. There's a contract for $15,000 for Management Advisory Services, project manager who worked on Cascade Drive, 10 of which has been paid out, and I have copies of invoices to the tune of that $10,000, but there is no job costing on these invoices. Therefore, several projects are listed. So I would like to know how much Management Advisory Services has been paid for project managing Cascade Drive, the Cascade Drive project, because that adds to the cost. Thank you.
Mark Bell Domingo. The two points that are pertinent to the discussion are, the center line needs to go back in regardless. I drove it, nobody was coming the other way. I can understand how people don't know what's going on. It's not just the residents, you know, if you're going to educate people, you also have to educate people who don't live here, who are just visiting somebody. So, you know, that part's absurd. The center line needs to go back in. The other points I tried to raise earlier, which I raised at the meeting, what was it, December 17th or whatever, 18th? It was stated that all costs were borne by safer routes to schools. Two days later, in the Marin IJ, that's not what it was, what the reporter put in his article, said that the consulting costs were paid by safer routes to schools, and that Fairfax was on the hook for the actual striping. So I don't understand how we're told one thing, and then two days later in the paper, something totally different comes out, let alone the other extraneous costs that we're looking at. So who, who's telling the truth? Who knows? You know, it's presented in the paper, "Oh, John Reed and Renee Goddard briefly spoke with people from Parisi, but they didn't really decide anything, and it was a very short meeting, and then two years later, the project starts." How'd that happen? There's like, there's like a disconnect. You know, sometimes I wonder if you guys live in the same universe as the rest of us. I just don't get it. You know, it reminds me of Steve Kinsey lying about how Farhan Mansourian was being paid for SMART and his replacement for the county. Two days later, the total opposite story came out in the IJ from a reporter. So why don't you come out with some figures? And while you're doing that, why don't you come out with some actual figures on the parcade? Okay?
Matt Towers, Meadowway. So I, I think it should go back to the way it was. As far as I'm concerned, I've asked for information about what was the, what was the data, and I'm thankful that Stephanie mentioned that she is mindful of data. So from what I've heard so far, there was no data suggesting there was a problem in the first place. Parisi mentioned that there was an accident, but there's no evidence of that whatsoever. So, but the real data that does exist is the police department. In the police department, there are no accidents caused, no injury accidents, no accidents caused by speeding. So there's no evidence to suggest whatsoever that speeding is an issue. It is the personal opinion of a few people who live along that street, and there are 1,500 people who that road services. So I reject the notion that there's some consensus that the road should be changed to 15 miles an hour. If you want to do that, you can do a survey and find that out, but there is no evidence to suggest that. And the current study is really biased. You can't do a study where you've asked somebody to limit the speed, and they, they change the things, limit the speed, then ask what the speed is. That's a canned study. That's biased. So I would suggest that you pay attention to the data and do what the data says, and represent all of Fairfax and not just a few people on Cascade. Thank you.
My name's Larry Davidson. I'm a 58-year resident of Meadowway. I am the person that measured the street. I'm a retired contractor. I know how to take accurate measurements. The average measurement of the street is a shade over 70. The average measurement of the street is a shade over 17 feet. I retired five years ago. I walk into town every day, sometimes twice. I've seen more close calls since the striping work took place than I have in the past five years. What I've also noticed is that most people are driving a foot to 18 inches away from the curb, which makes the actual measurement of the street effectively 15 and a half feet, 15 and a half feet. Thank you.
Frank Ager, Meadow Way, speaking for Save Fairfax. Cascade Drive is the only fire emergency evacuation route for 1,500 residents who live in a Cascade Canyon. A one-lane road from Meadow to 155 Cascade in the flats does not work. I spent 44 years as a commercial driver, never had an accident, never had a ticket. I interacted with the California Highway Patrol regularly. I was not allowed to drive in a fog line protected area, period. If CHP catches you driving in that area, you can see going up Sir Francis Drake outside of Fairfax, they'll pull you over and write your ticket. I know I would be liable if I crossed that fog line and was involved in an accident. Just today, I had to come to complete stop to avoid a head-on accident. There is insufficient room to pass a large vehicle or bus coming from the opposite direction in the one-lane section. Last week, a young woman was pushing a baby stroller up Cascade Drive in the area of 190 Cascade. At that location, cars were parked over the red curb on the sidewalk area. If she would have been hit, Fairfax and transportation consultant Parisi would have been held liable for the scheme that's been perpetrated upon that portion of Cascade Drive. Fairfax cannot allow parking in the sidewalk area forcing pedestrians into the street, even if there's a fog line and what they call a pedestrian access easement. Renita is scared, my spouse, Renita scared to death to drive down that one-lane portion of Cascade. It's time to put back the double yellow line. Corder Madera, oh, I'm sorry. If Fairfax believes we can drive, a person can drive in the protected area of the fog line, then you ought to have a legal opinion from whoever you get your legal opinions from. Corder Madera and the County Marine post 15 mile an hour speed limits and squiggly turn signs to alert folks who are coming into turns. They're on Corder Madera Avenue, the Nakashio Valley Road, and Sir Francis Drake Boulevard, all with double yellow lines on the roadway. The public right-of-way in that portion of Cascade Drive is 40 feet. You have the pavement and you have six to seven feet on each side of the pavement. That's public right-of-way. The public owns it. It's not privately owned. But folks put logs, they plant trees, they park their cars, they post signs, private property, no trisp, no parking. That's all public right-of-way. The people of Fairfax own 40 feet of right-of-way through there, and perhaps it's time to reclaim some of that public right-of-way to make it safer for pedestrians. Thank you.
Mallory Gata, Willow Avenue. In the last 20 years, how many accidents have there been there? Does anybody know? For the last 25? We have a report that's like the last, what, 18 years or 17 years?
This is 2008, since 2008. Further, but we could answer it later.
How many accidents have there been?
It's like 17 accidents, I think it is.
Anything that was significant or just, you know, where people...
Well, Jim Irving was hit, broke his, you know, for instance.
You should probably finish your comment because, so we can, and then reply it. Should finish your comment and then we'll get a reply.
I don't think that it's going to be very different with this, and I think this is, people are, behaviorally, people are not going to slow down to 15, maybe a few people will. But it's not like, you know, there are cops that are going to be patrolling there. And I think it's worked fairly well, and I think it's not going to work any better if you make it harder for people and have these little one-way turns. Thanks.
Well, if it's very quick, we don't normally do that, but this sounds like it's the last comment, so.
So you need to press the button if you're going to speak.
Sorry. 17 accidents, and in that period, how many cars drove on Cascade Drive? It's an infinitesimal percentage. Jim Irving was hit almost at Bolinas Road by a car backing out of the driveway. Has no significance whatsoever on what I have come to call head-on alley. Thank you.
Any further comments? One more? Okay. But you...
Just really quick, I'm just going to add to that. So Eric Bencourt was actually hit in a hit-and-run. He lives across the street from me. He was out for six months, he got a head concussion, wasn't himself for half a year. So it was a hit-and-run if someone's speeding up Cascade. It was on Cascade, it's reported, he was taken away by the ambulance. Yeah, well, it was there, so it was a hit-and-run.
Okay.
So Vice Mayor, we're not supposed to let people talk twice? I think people have said their comments.
What's that? Okay.
So one thing that you should look into, and I appreciate that Larry brought this up, that if the width of the road is under 17, it may be too small for you to actually have a center line to have two lanes because they fall under the regulatory width of the minimum required width of a lane. So you should look into that as well.
Okay, and so with that, seeing no further comments, we'll close the public comment and bring it back to the council on this time for discussion.
I have a quick comment. So I think I've made my thoughts known on this. One of the things that troubles me about this project is we spent 19,000 to start the work, and nobody ever said that that was covered by safe routes to schools. What was said by David Parisi was that his work was covered by safe routes to schools, but what we found is a part of his work was covered, and that was the 2,000. So 19,000 plus 2,000. Now we're talking about spending another 8,200 to grind out the fog line. What strikes me about this is, we already know that the process to start this was a problem, and I believe it started either early December or after Thanksgiving, so we're getting close to 60 days, is that I think we're sort of doing, and I don't mean this to denigrate anybody, but it's kind of a Rube Goldberg approach to continuing to tweak a project where I think we, you know, my personal opinion, but I will defer to the subcommittee, is I think we should go back to where we were and then really vet it with the community over time. And because now we're already talking about, we're close to 60 days after this happened, we still want to spend more money to tweak it a little more, and we're still not sure where we're going to end up. And so I predict that we'll be talking about this six months from now. And it worries me that, you know, I drove it shortly after it happened, I drove it yesterday. It is an evacuation route. Now, true, and it's about 1,500 people up there, are we going to end up in a problem with people getting confused because of those lines if people do have to get out and then a big fire truck going up, you know? So I'd prefer that we kind of step back from this and let's take out some of those signs, it's at least at a minimum, put in some yellow striping where the curves are. But let's stop throwing money at this and really work with the community on this to see, wouldn't it be better to just go back and start all over and say, what could we have done better? Could we, is it really the right thing to do? But I think we just keep tweaking and tweaking, and my concern is that we don't really know where we're headed with this, and I do feel that it's a mix of people. Some people really like it, a lot of people don't like it. And I think the good news on this is we've heard from both sides, which we don't always hear. We often hear from people who are against things, but not people that are supportive. And I think Chris Kenton has been one who's been really supportive, and others have as well. But I am really troubled that we're continuing down this path of tweaking, tweaking, and we're just not really clear on the endpoint. So I'm hoping that the subcommittee, it sounds like the next meeting is February 1, can really sort of wrestle this to the ground and maybe make some decisions before we're looking at six months down the road, still talking about more tweaks. And I don't think we're necessarily making it a lot better. I think we're just adding features that we think will enhance it. So I know that everything was well-intentioned, and I don't want to take away from that.
Okay, well, I agree that the process for getting to where we are is completely backwards, and we've talked about how, you know, that that's a major mistake that we need to deal with in the future. You know, as we go dealing with other things, you know, we definitely need a public, thank you, Mallory, public interaction and public notice that some stuff is going to happen or that we're contemplating something so people can weigh in. That's certainly the cheaper way to do it. Right now, we're in a place, I mean, it'll cost a bunch of money to put it back the way it was. So we better be sure that that's what we want before we do it. And I, for one, feel that we need to just go from where we are right now and go forward so that we can make an educated guess. I mean, if we just quickly just put it back the way it was right now, we're basically not only throwing the money that has already been spent down the plug hole, but we're going to throw close to the same amount to go back to something that we got before. Frankly, I've been getting complaints about this stretch of road for decades. So, you know, and, you know, like, if you've ever walked down there, you've known what it's like to keep your ears open and jump into the bushes if there's a car coming, you know, and that is not really taking into account all the users of the road. One thing that kind of made it plain for me was in the December 22nd, what are the Saturday workshop in here, was the comparison of this section of Cascade and differentiating it from the rest of the Cascade. The rest of Cascade is significantly wider, has a yellow line on it, there's pretty good sightlines, you can see what's coming. And then talking about the various other roads in Fairfax, and we've got, what, eight miles of them, or, you know, quite a few roads winding up through the hills. Most of them are narrow, there's limited sightlines, there's room for about one car to get through. If you see another car coming along, you stop, you figure out how you're going to negotiate so to get both by each other and also deal with cars that may be parked along that road. Basically, you're cautious because you need to be, it's a narrow road. Well, this section of Cascade is a narrow road. It's got narrow width, it's got very limited sightlines, it's got blind curves, and really to put a yellow line down the middle of that is to encourage dangerous behavior. And I think that that was a mistake from the beginning when that yellow line was put in because it gives the illusion that two cars can use it and have accelerated speeds, and we're hearing 22.8 miles, I think, was one, you know, number that Chris threw out as a speed that people went through there. And that speed makes it completely unsafe for any pedestrian or any bicycle that's also using that road. And frankly, we need to take into account all the users of the road. We are threatening the lives of people who are trying to just walk down the street by encouraging cars to go faster than what a safe speed for those blind curves are. So I believe personally that it was in an unsafe condition before. I don't necessarily think that the way it is now is the perfect way, but we've got to figure it out as we go forward. I think we need some education for people that, you know, maybe the way to do it is not fog lines. I think 15 miles an hour is a great idea, but I think turning it into a racetrack is not the right approach for the safety of all users. That's my personal opinion.
One of the sites I visited was Loma Alta, which is the connecting road between Mill Valley and Corder Madera. And as you come from Mill Valley to Corder Madera on the downslope, it's a 15 mile an hour. And it's 20 feet in width, and there's no, I mean, there's no fog lanes, it's very, very narrow shoulders, if any. I, I share, Barbara, your concern about this having no end in sight and an ambiguous process. The individual who spoke, I believe is Matt, I do think you're in the minority in terms of feeling like speeding is not an issue. I just, well, there just hasn't been any statistical studies I've seen at all, right? So it's all, it's all feedback from the community. I mean, we do have some residents that are, that have speed guns, and we are, you know, we're doing what we can as far as input from the residents and the police department and so forth, but... Anyway. I, I like the idea of going back to the yellow, the yellow line, but did you recommend a dotted line at the curves?
So my suggestion would be, but again, I want to defer to you and John on the subcommittee...
But that's not something that we have mulled over yet.
On the curves, put in, just on the curves...
Yeah.
The yellow stripe, they can be dotted, they don't have to be solid, just on the curves so it can direct people more, and maybe that's something you can talk about at your February 1 meeting.
Well, the decisions need to be approved here, though, if it's going to constitute funding.
I don't think, so we delegated that to you and John as a subcommittee to make decisions.
Okay, well, that process isn't clear, that process isn't clear then.
We're not, we're not at the, no? What are you saying? Well, Janet, maybe you can weigh in rather than just nodding your head.
I'm sorry, no, we didn't, you didn't delegate them the authority to make decisions. You need three to make a decision. They're two, they're an ad hoc subcommittee to go out and liaison with the public, to bring in information to report back, but they can't, just the two of them, make a decision. They can make a recommendation, but they can't make a decision.
Okay, well, then my recommendation or decision that I would recommend tonight is to say, as long as we're grinding up those fog lines, why not add, at a minimum, to bring some semblance of what was there back on the curves, yellow dotted lines, just on the, I think there's two curves. And that's all I'm saying. My understanding was the subcommittee could make decisions, but apparently I'm wrong.
Well, as clarification, the amount falls under the manager's authority. As the manager, I'm kind of getting... As the manager, I'm kind of getting guidance from the council, and I get guidance from the two council members at the group. And then part of that was a discussion at the meeting about what improvements the council actually authorized at this meeting on December 4th, and we shared it on December 18th. The, what you're proposing is a concept that actually the traffic engineer had recommended at one point, a dotted yellow line around the curves. The council, as indicated in the staff report, actually said, no, we don't want to do that this time.
I didn't say no.
No, you didn't, but majority, a majority of the council indicated no, and that's before Councilmember Mayor Goddard recused herself. So majority said, that's not something we want to explore at this moment in time. I would say it's a little, if the majority of this group said, let's explore that, I need to go back to the traffic engineer because the traffic engineer at one point recommended that. And since that time, after he's driven it a few times, he's decided that what he's proposing on these latest changes, actually, he thinks would work better. So what would happen is I would need to go back to him and explore that. And then I guess-
So I would recommend that we decide from this group if we want that explored. And so, and give you direction to go back and explore that if the majority of this council with Mayor Goddard recuse agrees that it's worth exploring that.
Well, I'll take a turn speaking, if you'd like. I waited until last. First of all, I, I'm not sure, and I don't think anybody in this room has the data, so we just don't have the data at this point, what, whether there actually was a formal speed study ahead of time. But I certainly concur, as, as John mentioned, that this whole thing started in part because people on the street were complaining. People on the street had a pretty strong sense that the traffic was moving too fast on the street and that it was dangerous. Secondly, I, and so, you know, it's not like there wasn't any problem to solve and somebody just decided to repaint the lines. It was done for a reason, and going back should be done for the reason that there was no other solution that was any better. And secondly, I, I do agree with many of the people who have said that data is important and we should look to the data. I recall in our earlier discussion with the council that there were a number of people who said that, and I would agree, that it makes sense to try something, get something in place, and then try it for a long enough time to really see what happens after you get past the effect of everybody being confused about the new changes. So to change our track right now and go back does not seem wise to me. I think we, and we've, with the process that we have, imperfect though it may be, the last thing we seem to have come up with is, is what was presented in the staff report, which is to take out the 20, grind out the 25 that's on the, on the street right now. That makes sense because, you know, it's pretty hard to change the speed limit if it's embedded in the pavement. So get it out of there and move the fog lines out because the traffic engineer believes that really makes sense to do. And that is the area that, that it's the narrowest. And change some signage primarily to simplify the signage and to lower the speed limit to 15 and make that clear. One comment that I heard I thought sounded good, which was to have speed limit signs that gradually decrease as you go up so that you get plenty of chance to see that the speed is, is decreasing. But my feeling would not be to go back to what it is, what it was originally right now. My feeling would be to go ahead and complete those changes and then give it some time. And I know it's taking time and it's taking money, and that's unfortunate, but it's in the scheme of things, this is a pretty dangerous street, and we need to do the best we can to fix it. And finally, I'll say that the street, well, two more things. One, one thing is that the reason that it's dangerous is physically, and this was mentioned as well, people have moved into the public right of way. And that would be a political nightmare to go down and start taking back the right way, right of way. But really, that is what the problem is, is that the street is physically narrow because of, among other things, very large, beautiful trees that are in the way now. So I don't know what to do about that, but that's really what the problem is. It's physically a very narrow street with a lot of people using it. So the last thing I want to say is that regarding an evacuation route, I still really don't buy that any of these changes, no matter what stripes we paint or speed limit signs we post, are going to change that much if there's a real evacuation. Because people will cross the white line to get out of the way of a fire truck. The fire truck will cross the right line, white line to get around cars. People will behave that way. That's what, that's the way we behave when we're on Sir Francis Drake. And an emergency vehicle with flashing lights comes up, we just get out of the way. And so we pull into the parking lane or whatever we need to do to get out of the way. So this is normal, and I don't think it'll really inhibit evacuation as long as we don't make any physical changes to the road, which, none of which we're contemplating. So this agenda item was to receive a report and consider it. And we've done that. So I'm not sure if you were looking to, or looking for, expecting any changes to the immediate next steps at this point, but anybody have any further continued discussion?
Yeah, I just had a couple of thoughts in terms of getting, you know, because Stephanie and I are the subcommittee at a publicly, I mean, our, our next meeting about this subject, it's going to be the two of us. And I would like to check in with the rest of the council in terms of educational signage, explaining that everybody has the right to use all parts of the roadway, and also that parking is not allowed on the pavement anywhere in this section. Meaning that, you know, cars that are parked on the pavement within that white line section are illegally parked because they're parked in the right of way. You know, but all users need to show respect to each other and, and share the road, basically.
I, I think that you have enough things that you're trying to do to kind of clean this up and get a better view of it. I think before you start adding different type of signage, which may end up being potentially confusing, like we're removing certain signs, maybe you talk to the community group on February 1st about that, and then you'll have an opportunity to bring it back to the council, whatever day.
Yeah, we'll have a council meeting just after that.
That is February 5th or something like that, rather than layering on more stuff. That's my two cents.
Yeah, I wasn't suggesting instituting the new signage and stuff before that, you know, but I wanted to see what the other council members thought about that idea because I certainly would like to suggest that to the community. Just to make it plainer, that this road is, people should respect each other's rights to use the road and to use it safely for all involved. Basically, that's the objective.
Well, I, I share that objective, and the only concern I would have with having more signs warning people that this is a dangerous curve ahead or that share it with pedestrians would just, the only issue I would see would be the issue of having so much signage that people can't absorb at all, which is probably something the traffic engineer can help us with. But I like the direction that's already going of removing some of the signage that isn't as necessary. So really focus on the core message, which is slowdown, especially around those curves. And-
And about the parking in the right of way. I think that that's a physical problem because it's a physical impediment to people getting through.
If that's not going to leave something else in the right of way that we can't move, if the right of way would actually be cleared in those dangerous curves, then it's certainly something to consider. Now, the neighborhood is going to have a lot to say about that, and they're going to be probably some-
I intend to listen, yeah.
Some difference of opinions depending on whether that's your parking space or not your parking space. But yeah, it's, as I said before, I think that the core issue here is the road's narrow. So, yeah.
Okay, so as far as next steps, will you get back to us as far as period of measurement from Parisi's?
Sure. I, I think he had talked about three, four months. I'll get that. But I'm planning to move forward with the final drawing as prepared by the traffic engineer.
That we agreed on the 21st.
Yes, per his signed off plans. So that's what we're going to move forward with.
And then are we meeting on the 1st?
The 1st is the date that I think the two of you indicated that would work.
Okay.
And so if that's confirmed, then I will send it out.
And do we communicate that to the working group?
In an email, we indicated that's a tentative date. So we confirm that up as well as let the whole neighborhood know. Game plan would be, I'll get, I'll get a start date. We'll get information out and we'll try to put a sign out in the neighborhood about the meeting and the, and the improvements.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
So Vice Mayor, I would make a motion to suspend the 1130 rule.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One more item. Thank you all.
So we're on item nine.
Well, thank you for all, all what I assume to be very hard work that you've done. And we are on our final item of the evening, and that is that we would be considering our council board and committee assignments for 2020. So Garrett, you want to give us a, Michelle, do you want to give us just a teeny bit of background and we'll go for it?
Very teeny bit of background, yes. Every January, the council reviews their assignments to the various boards and committees around the county, as well as a couple of liaisons to town committees. And it's that time of year to do it again, and this year is a little different because we have a new council member and a departed council member. So there is the list. The current list has a section called to be assigned or not yet assigned. So those need to be assigned tonight. And I just wanted to make two notes about that list. One is that we added a position on this list that the council actually added in 2016, but it didn't make it onto the list, and you're aware of that. So what did we call that?
Neighborhood meeting liaison.
Oh, yeah, that was the neighborhood meeting liaison. It was you, Mayor Goddard, and Councilmember Reed, I believe. And one other note is that the MCC MC position for the sea level rise slash climate change committee, Councilmember Lax was originally on that committee a few years ago, and then it kind of morphed into a countywide committee, I understand, called Baywave. Is that true?
Right, which hasn't even convened yet.
That hasn't convened yet. But now the MCC MC has asked that you, they want to re-initiate that group, and, and they're asking that you appoint someone else this evening. That's it.
I ask one question. So there's on here Measure J Oversight Committee, and I know Measure F kicks in, what, March 1. Can we change the name of that to Measure J F slash F Oversight Committee? Because it'll be the same committee, right?
Sure, we can just call it, if we call it Special Municipal Tax, or you prefer the measure whatever.
Why don't we just say Measure J slash F? Just keep it simple. We don't need to make it really long.
Is, is this a reflection of the committees, how the year ended, or has there been shuffling already?
There's been no shuffling. This is the 2019 list. It's just the current list. Does something look different to you?
So Renee, these are the committees you were on, you served on last year.
Okay. For example. Okay, thanks. And, you know, this neighborhood meeting liaison, I don't, I don't, I think we, we called it the neighborhood safety committee or safety liaison because it wasn't in order to attend neighborhood meetings. It was really started around the Lansdale project and a project on Dominga, and so I'd rather have that redefined.
It's a, we can give it another name in the, I have the old staff report here to, I went back and looked at it, and it just said to designate Mayor Goddard and Vice Mayor Reed at that time as the council liaisons to neighborhood meetings that arise regarding pedestrian, bicyclist, and vehicle safety. So we could insert the word safety in there if you like, I think.
I think so.
I mean, it wasn't a-
Yeah, and I believe this is why we were contacted around the, the issue that you just recused yourself on.
Right.
And Michelle, where you noted the mosquito one, for example, is four years. Would you have noted that elsewhere where there's a commitment term?
That one's a little special because it's through the mosquito vector, that's its separate, I guess it's a district. Is it a district? Special district?
It's a special district, and that's a statutory provision.
Okay, but my question is, are there any other committees that have a term requirement?
No, unless I've noted it, but I don't recall any.
Okay, thanks.
May I ask, did you have something?
I just want to say I'm fine with mine. If we just want to go through this fairly quickly and then-
And I could add for Councilmember Hellman that typically people get on a committee like this and they stay on it because they learn more and more. There's not a lot of movement every year, put it that way.
So I, but I'm just wondering for, for Stephanie's sake and all of ours, do, do you remember a process that we've been through to start to deal with this, or shall we just go for it?
Yeah, I think in the past, sometimes what you did, you started with, here's the assignments that were the previous council member, and sometimes you traded, and sometimes you said, okay, you're a new person, you could just have this, this, and this. The people who are alternates, say, on the fire board now, typically they become the primary, and then you pick another alternate. That's how you kind of done it in the past. Sometimes you talked a lot, other times it would go really fast. It just, just depends.
Okay, well, might I recommend, and tell me what you think of this, that we just go ahead and take, go down the list of the not yet assigned, and then if we come, then we can get into conversation if there's something that, that we need to talk about.
Sounds good.
So starting with the Affordable Housing Committee, at this point, we have Barbara.
I'll be on that one.
Barbara, are you on the Affordable Housing Committee? Yes.
So, so, and, so that one's open for somebody else?
I'll take that one.
So that, that's the first probably discussion then. Because Barbara, given the, the substantial things that you have, I'm wondering-
I would like to stay on the Affordable Housing Committee, and part of the reason is because of the county committees that I sit on, the Assessment of Fair Housing Committee, and the CDBG all actually revolve around affordable housing. So I do not want to give up affordable housing. And I think now that Peter is gone, there is a slot open for someone who I know at one point you wanted to be on Affordable Housing.
Yes, I did, I mean, I've always wanted to be on the Affordable Housing Committee. It hasn't worked out to be there. But now I'm hearing that, that's why I was wondering.
I think some of what we've learned over time, and I think Michelle pointed this out, is when you first get on the council, there's a lot of learning that happens. And also, for example, I ended up with a lot of things because I was an alternate for Larry Bragman on a lot of things, and I ended up going to a lot of meetings. But, and then the county selected me for certain committees apart from this. the county selected me for certain committees apart from this, so I'm not interested in giving up affordable housing at this time, and I would like to keep everything I have, and I'm not interested in going for any of the not-yet-assigned.
Okay, loud and clear. So, then, I would very much like to serve on the Affordable Housing Committee. Stephanie, shall we discuss?
Well, it's suggesting what you can do is go through the list, we'll just note who's interested in what, and then you can take the lower hanging fruit, if it's just one person, then you know you're done.
Okay. All right, so we're going to...
I think that makes sense, but, yep.
Okay, so we need a, an alternate on ABAG, which is the Association of Bay Area Governments. I am the ABAG delegate.
I'll be the delegate, the alternate, that's fine.
Okay, so Stephanie would take the alternate position. The Climate Action Committee, which Bruce serves on, needs a second member.
Can I raise something on that? Is that, we, and I have no dog in this fight. I was on the Climate Action Committee for three years as the council member, and then when Bruce came on the council, there was a decision made that we could have two, and...
In between there, you left and Peter came on, but then the decision was made to...
I switched, and Peter, Peter took it over, but some of the things that I think might be a good reason to leave it as one, but if other people wanna be on it, I have no problem with that, is, it's just because we end up with the Brown Act preclusions from talking to people, sometimes if there's one person on a town committee, then, you know, John might talk to Bruce about something pertaining to climate action, but if there's always another council member on there, that means it's always those two. So, I'm just raising that, and, you know, you have a lot of people on the Climate Action Committee as well, but I know you want more.
But the upside is if one person can't be there, then you do have council representation, right?
Well, that's one upside, but another one is that the Climate Action Committee is, frankly, a pretty active committee, and tends to, has already, and probably will continue to recommend actions to the council that have both budgetary and, and ordinance implications. So it, I was thinking it was working pretty well to have two people on it, two council representatives on it, just because there is, it would, it should facilitate, I think it does facilitate that passover from, from the Climate Action Committee to the council of recommendations, if there's been some discussion with two council members. But absolutely, as far as the Brown Act, it basically means that for everything the Climate Action Committee is talking about, the two of us are Brown Act buddies on that, and the rest of any discussion has to be on the council, but, you know, on the DS, but that's, that's just the way it is. Anyway, I would, I would prefer to have a second representative, and I'm, I, I'll just say, by the way, that, like you've said, Barbara, I'm happy with the, with the, with what I already have, although there are a couple that I'll, we'll talk about as we go through them here, of these new ones.
So it sounds to me like we're still interested in staying with two members of the Climate Action Committee, and, so Stephanie would like to join, so we'll have Stephanie be the second member on the CAC. Flood Zone 9 Advisory Board Alternate, that's open. Bruce is our, is our member.
Flood, anyone?
I'm happy to be an alternate on it. It's, I've, I've been to several of their meetings before, and I've learned a lot about Creek Hydraulics, so...
Yeah, it's a small, small, fairly small board, doesn't meet real often, and so far I haven't missed a meeting, but, yep.
Okay, well, I'm happy to be your alternate on it.
Okay, so, perfect, so, so John will take that second position, I mean, the alternate position. Marin Clean Energy, alternate.
That's one I would be interested in looking at, if, if somebody else doesn't...
Anybody else?
...be on it. Now, the, the alternate position on that would, or same thing with the one that John just volunteered for, we're not expecting that the alternate would attend all of the meetings.
No, the alternate doesn't attend the meetings, she'll only attend if I can't go, so Peter has gone for me a few times.
But basically, the alternate would be on the list for packets and be able to follow what's going on?
No, you don't.
No?
If you want me to, I can forward them to you when the time comes.
Okay.
But they don't, they don't routinely send it to you, but I can send it to you if you'd like.
Okay.
Okay, great, so if that's okay, we'll put Bruce as the alternate. Then we've got the MTA, the Marin Telecommunications Agency Alternate.
I'll do that.
So Stephanie on that, I'm sorry, I should've asked. Everybody okay?
I should speak into the microphone.
The MCCMC Joint Services Authority Oversight Committee.
Does that thing still exist?
I don't know what that is.
I don't think they ever met.
I don't know if they ever meet, and I'm not, I can only guess what it means, but someone could...
Who was Peter on that?
I think Peter said they never met.
I don't think they ever met.
So...
But you never know.
Is it paid?
No, nothing's paid.
I'm kidding.
There's very little that's paid. What about if, well, what about if somebody volunteers, but Michelle could check with Rebecca to see if it actually exists? Because I think Peter said he never went to it.
Yeah, I can check on that.
But maybe we put a name down...
Put a name down, and actually, what happens after you've decided this, I contact all the committees to let them know who the new members are.
It would be good to know what it is, though, before we step up and do it.
Details. Well, you have a meeting next week with the MCCMC.
Okay, so Councilmember Hellman will be on the committee that we don't know what it is, and we'll report back what it, what it is. Oh, you didn't raise your hand?
Oh, really? It's a very important sounding committee.
Can we first find out what it is, and then we'll come back to this? Is that okay?
I don't see any reason why we couldn't postpone this a month.
No, I think it's better if you just appoint someone, then we don't have to come back. Then, if it doesn't exist, you just never show up.
Okay, who would like to be on that?
Oh, come on, Bruce, you've done so many of those committees.
Right, MCC committees.
Oh yeah, you're done with OPEB, you can do that.
Well, okay, I'll hold it for it for now, but I might be back.
OPEB is done.
OPEB is done, so it'd be a good one for Councilmember, Vice Mayor.
Well, OPEB is doing the, the speaking tour, which actually we should avail ourselves of, because it's a good presentation, but other than that, OPEB is finished up, yes.
Okay, so we're appointing you to the Joint Services, okay, terrific, thank you for that. The MCCMC, this is the committee you were talking about, the wave, what's it called?
It's not the Bay Wave. They're, I think they're changing it to the Climate Change Committee or the Climate Action Committee.
Yeah, that was actually when Fairfax hosted MCCMC, and that, that was when it was brought up, at that MCCMC meeting to reconstitute that committee.
So might I...
And I was, I had my hand high in the air, but Peter grabbed it because of it.
Well, I was gonna suggest that it be one of our, one of our Climate Action Committee members, so that we...
Are we talking about the sea change one? Sea level change?
Right.
Yeah.
So, would you be interested in that?
Sure. Or did you want to?
You want to? Okay.
I mean, I'm, sure, yeah.
Okay.
They're meeting next Wednesday.
We'll send you the information.
I have all the information.
I'm in Sacramento, remember?
She can't make it next Wednesday.
Isn't next Wednesday the MCCMC?
They wanna convene, like, a half hour before.
Do they need an alternate?
They didn't say they did.
Okay, well, let's, we just...
It hasn't really started yet, they're talking, it's sort of an initial representative.
So can we do the Measure J F Oversight Committee?
I'll do that one.
Okay, Stephanie picked the Measure J F Oversight Committee.
Okay, and she's also picked the climate, the Climate Change Sea Level Rise MCCMC. Stephanie?
Okay, thank you. There are a lot of people talking, and, and Bruce, just to answer your question, they're meeting right before the meeting.
Okay, and then she's, Stephanie has also taken the Measure J Oversight Committee. We're down to the Ross Valley Fire Department Board.
Which you're the alternate on, right?
I am the alternate at this time, and I would like to put my name forward for that. I, I got a, some input from a member of the community saying that it felt like it would be good to have some new, some new blood there, but, but I have to say that my blood is new there, because I've been an alternate and only been to several meetings, and I feel as though I've got some orientation at this point, but I've never had a chance, and I have had some good opportunity to speak with several of the members of...
So that sounds like the alternate is open, then.
Well, John, how long have you been on the board?
Good question.
Because there's two positions, right?
There are two positions, yes.
Two, two and an alternate?
Two and an alternate, actually.
Yeah, two and one alternate.
How long have you served?
Good question, probably six years.
No, more than six, weren't you, you were on, you were on before I started.
He was, you were on when Larry Bragman was on.
Oh, wow.
So...
Well, I think the question, John, is, would you like to, would you like to continue serving?
I would like to continue. It, I mean, there's, there's a learning curve with any of these boards, but I feel at this point that...
Stephanie, why don't you go for the alternate?
I, yeah.
You want the alternate?
Well, I wanna hear what John had to say.
Oh, he already said he wanted to serve.
I don't think he was finished talking, we finished...
Did you finish? Stephanie wanted to hear what you were gonna say.
Oh, what I wanted to say?
Yeah.
Oh, I said there's a learning curve with it. Yeah, I've put a lot of effort into, you know, working to develop different programs that they have there, and, you know, I'm currently continuing to do that, so I would like to continue to serve on that.
Okay. Would you like the alternate position?
Sure. Where's that, and you're on your list?
Well, if you, if you change this one to alternate here...
Yeah, that's fine.
That's probably a good way to go, yeah. I would just say, Stephanie, you're, you're signed up for a number of things, so...
And then the Ross Valley Paramedic Authority, alternate?
So that's Renee, and the alternate, which is who currently...
So the Paramedic Authority, alternate. Who's the Paramedic Authority, John?
I'm the Paramedic Authority, yeah.
So we need an alternate.
So you need an alternate that, I should say, he's, he's not here. Frank Egger was the alternate for many years, and then Peter came along and said he wanted it one year, and...
Renee, do you think that would...
He was one of the founding members of it, and so historically, he did that, but pretty, pretty much, I think I used Frank once when I was on there, as an alternate. I made it to all the meetings except for one, but...
So Renee, since you're on the fire board, do you want the alternate?
Do I want the alternate on the Paramedic Authority?
Yeah.
Not necessarily.
Well, who else wants it? I don't wanna, it meets the same time MCE meets. I remember Larry used to call me like five minutes before MCE, telling me he was going to the Paramedic Authority.
How convenient.
Would somebody, would somebody like to ask if Frank would want to serve, or what's the consensus of the council?
I think one of the things we did with that is we made a decision that we wanted to keep it at the council level, rather than having somebody not on the council on it. We decided that a few years ago, so...
Okay, so we need an alternate.
Yeah, at that time that Peter...
And it's, it's not a long meeting, as I recall.
It's, it's not.
Okay, I'll, I'll be the alternate.
Okay.
And then we have the Zero Waste Committee.
Well, if, I was on it originally, and then you asked me if I would step off so Peter could take it, and I'm fine if somebody else wants it, but if, if we just wanna divvy it out, I could be on it, because I don't think it meets that often.
It's gonna be an exciting year and zero waste.
My, my feelings will not be hurt if somebody else wants it. I'll, I'll take it.
I'll do it, I don't, I don't care.
Okay, Stephanie, take it.
Stephanie, you'd be good. Who's gonna look at the contract?
I'll appreciate your faith.
So all we're left with is the Affordable Housing Committee slot?
Well, there's one, there's one other thing, though, actually. I was interested in trading...
I know what's coming.
In, in stepping from the Ross Valley School District Liaison to the alternate to the Ross Valley School District, and wondered if Councilmember Hellman might be interested in stepping into that position.
Oh, sure, I'd be happy to.
Would you?
Yeah, Ross Valley?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Not the school bus, though, I'm not doing this.
No, not the school bus. I've got the school bus, and I have one further request, and this was a position that existed, and then, at the time, Mayor Coler was, didn't want us participating in an official liaison role, but I would very much like to propose my rejoining the, what is now called the Marin Healthy Youth Partnership, which has representation from, and that was the Ross Valley Healthy Community Collaborative, which has completely changed into a very functional countywide committee with no representation from Fairfax. And they have a steering committee, and I have been requested to, to pursue, whether that at the will of the council, I could go back and join that.
Is there one position?
There's one position, and it may not even, I'm not even sure what the official position is at this point. It's not, it's not one of the 12 sector representatives, which is what they have. It's a, it would be the steering committee.
So my objection to it at the time, subsequent, was when they started lobbying, and I...
Right.
And so, I don't know what they've evolved to, but I think the lobbying effort was wrong, and I don't think the town should support that.
Right, and also, so you know, we were paying, and, and we had a, a, how much were we contributing annually, $2,500?
We stopped paying.
So we stopped paying.
We stopped, but it was initially, the first couple of years, $2,500 a year.
Right, so there's no financial...
I'm not even talking about the financial at this point, as long, I, I don't think lobbying is an appropriate role for a town committee, and so, a town-sponsored committee, so if it's gonna be created and you would be a member, as long as they stay away from lobbying, I don't have an objection.
Okay, can I come back with clarity on that? I wanna speak with San Anselmo, with John Wright, and find out what his official role is, whether it's he's on the steering committee, or whether he's an official appointee. So, is that okay, if we continue that next meeting?
Yeah, you can always come back, just for that one item.
Okay, and now we just have to settle the Affordable Housing Committee. Which I really have wanted to serve on for a long time.
Well, I think, I would just say this, and not to make Stephanie mad at me, as Stephanie picked up a whole lot of committees as a new member, and I know, Renee, you've wanted to be on Affordable Housing for quite some time, and I think having been on this council six or seven years, might be time.
I would support that as well, yeah, with apologies to Stephanie, although maybe not apologies after you find out how many committees you've gotta attend.
Okay, so, I believe that's settled.
Public comment, and then what you could do is take a motion to support all your assignments, and then we'll make it happen.
Okay, is there any public comment?
Not to be provocative at this late hour, but I understand the feeling of being connected to something for a long time, and doing the learning curve and all of that, but we just had a new election, and as a big supporter of our newest council member, I feel like she's sort of getting the backseat right now. Everyone's told that, you know, she's sort of taken alternates and taken the thing that nobody wants, and I think it's healthy for different people to rotate on important issues as well, so, just a comment.
Okay, appreciate the comment. Any, any other comment?
I second that.
For the record, Stephen Keyes seconds that. Okay, and I, yeah, important to think, to think about. So bringing it back up here, any other comment, given the comments that we've just received?
It sounds, it all sounds reasonable to me, I, I'm happy with the way it's worked out so far. I, I'm happy with the way it's worked out so far. I would just say, in response to that comment and to Stephanie, that in my first year, and really, that the list is kind of short for myself as well, but it, it felt like plenty. And we do this every year, and so, we can, there'll be, once you are alternate on something, it can happen later that you're not the alternate anymore, and maybe being the alternate, you end up going to a lot of meetings, and these things can take a lot of time. They can, they can, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't counsel you to want more and more committees right away, because there's a lot of learning curve.
Yeah, I know, I, I appreciate the comments.
But I'll ask, are you okay with what you've got at this point?
I, I would have appreciated the fire, because it's something that I'm passionate about, and I want to learn more about and, and get close to that organization, and I do think that it's healthy to have fresh blood, and we have heard that they are, you know, that they're looking for that as well, so that was something that I was hoping for. So, in any organization, new, new blood is healthy, so that's my comment. And that's not to devalue the contributions you've made to the organization, but it's healthy to mix it up, right? You can appreciate that.
It's a, the Ross Valley School District is a really good example of that.
Absolutely.
I, I think that's a, you know, and I, and I hope that this will actually build some bridges that we haven't been able to actually walk across for a while, so, so I appreciate you taking that. And I'm glad to serve as the alternate. So, anyway, so may I entertain a motion to approve all of these changes?
So, I'd make a motion to approve those changes. I think it's just a recommendation.
Do you, are, do you have them all, Michelle? Or do you want to check them by us, or are we good?
Do you want me to read them into the record?
Sure.
Might be a little out of order.
That's fine.
All right, so...
Maybe just the changes?
I'm just gonna do the ones that people took on tonight, with the assumption that someone else let it go if I'm assigning it to someone else. Is that clear? All right, we'll start with our newest councilmember, Hellman. I have you down for the Association of Bay Area Governments, alternate, Climate Action Committee, Marin Telecommunications Agency, alternate, the MCCMC Climate Change Committee, the Measure J Oversight Committee, Ross Valley Fire Department Board, alternate, the Zero Waste Committee, and Ross Valley School Board Liaison. It's actually a lot of meetings you're gonna be going to every month. Does that sound good? All right, is that right? Does that sound, does that concur with what you understood?
It compares with my notes, but I don't know if they compare with...
Okay.
It does concur with mine, also.
For Mayor Goddard, I have you down for the Affordable Housing Committee, the, what else do I have here? Ross Valley Paramedic Authority, alternate, and the Ross Valley Fire Department Board. Okay. Next, Councilmember Reed, I have you as the alternate on the Flood Zone 9 Advisory Board, and I think that's it.
I believe I'm the alternate for Bruce.
Alternate, sorry, yeah, I, I forgot to say that. And then, Vice Mayor Ackerman, you're on Marin Clean Energy as the alternate, and the much coveted role on the MCCMC Joint Services Authority Oversight Committee. It kind of sounds like Joint Chiefs of Staff.
That's right, we'll, we'll keep track of the joints.
Okay, and I think that's it. Because Councilmember Kohler, you didn't change anything, right?
No, so I make a motion to approve those changes.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, Kohler, and second, Ackerman, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, so...
Can I just mention one thing for a future agenda item?
Yes.
Just, I had asked the town manager about bringing a short-term rental ordinance, which we discussed a while ago, and I guess it slipped through the cracks. I think the time is right, and it has to go to the Planning Commission first because of zoning issues, so it wouldn't come to us for a while, but my idea is something like the Mill Valley Ordinance with host compliance for enforcement, which is, usually pays for itself. So, Garrett, just, we're gonna take that to the Planning Commission in the next few months?
Yes, we all have that down. I'm not too sure when it'll get to you, but yes, it's on...
But it fell through the cracks about a year ago.
Actually, it was probably a lot longer than that.
Two years ago.
I do apologize, because I actually brought it to you twice for discussion in the Planning Commission once.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, okay, so thank you so much, everyone, and Barbara, would you, would you do the honors of adjourning, because I don't have any on my agenda.
Oh, councilmember reports and comments?
Oh. I think we're, I think we're just gonna go with what was in the packet for, for tonight, but the adjournment.
Town managers' report?
Oh, sorry. I, I know. Garrett, do you have a town manager's report?
No, unless you want me to comment on comments made earlier by the public, but I could just save that till next time.
Do you want to comment on comments made?
Well, there were comments made regarding Meadowway Bridge, and I, just to clarify, it's...
Please.
Meadowway Bridge needs to be replaced, it's an old wooden bridge, 75 years old in water, it's crazy to think it'll last forever, which was a contention of the one person. The 400,000 number that he's referring to has to do with the cost for a metal bridge, but that assumes a metal bridge and no abutments. Any bridge needs an abutments to keep it in place in event of an earthquake. Meadowway Bridge is also subject to liquid faction, you get a big earthquake, that thing's just gonna shake and fall down. More importantly, it all comes from federal funding, so under federal funding programs for the Meadowway Bridge, it's an 89.5% roughly share, they cover design costs, we cover 11 and 1/2, construction's covered 100%, all the other costs you would have to incur, CEQA and so on, for a project, so I think it's very misleading to say, you could save 400,000 by not doing a bridge, at least that's what it sounded like he was saying.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, for the record, appreciate that. So, yes, we are adjourned. Okay, thank you, everyone.